Hey, welcome everyone. Before we start, I just want to let everybody know that the meeting is being recorded. And please stay muted until you're called upon. And lastly, if you'd like to comment down at the bottom of the screen under reactions, just click the raise hand button and we'll call on the raised hands in the order if they were submitted. So I'll turn it over to Chairman Consolati.
This meeting is now open. Can I get a roll call of individuals that are here?
Pat Carlino, aye.
Sean Renier, aye.
David Consolati, aye. Our first order of business is the minutes of the open session meeting of April 20th, 21.
I'll move the minutes as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all is the favor.
Pat Carlino, aye.
Don Renier, aye.
David Consolati, aye. Next, we have a public hearing. Application of Jean Albano candidate, I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher this, Cannichelli and Cassidy Purdy Forest Wild for approval of special permit under section nine, one nine 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 dash one one, marijuana establishment, section thirteen point three, site plan, section thirteen point four, special permit from town only zoning bylaws. The proposals for the marijuana establishment for the retail and manufacturing of cannabis, the cannabis will be sold to the public twenty-one and over and licensed establishment in Massachusetts. The property effective is located at six thirty-five Laurel Street and Rural Business Zoning District, essential map seven lot nine. Do Sean or Patty have anything to say about this before we get started with the public?
No, I'd like to hear from the public first, Dave.
Yeah, I would like to as well, Dave.
Okay. Let him in, Chris.
Hey, as of right now, I don't see any hands. I'm sure there will be some. Okay, so I have Pete DiAgostino.
Okay.
From Ten X.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Pete DiAgostino on behalf of the applicant. Yeah, if I could, Mr. Chairman, first and foremost, I want to thank you and the board for having us in tonight to appear on our special permit application. I'm joined tonight by Jeanie Albano Carmichael and Cassandra Purney, who are the two principals. Just wanted to briefly say hello, if I could.
Greg?
Sandra? You're muted, Cassandra.
I wait. Sorry. Good evening, everybody, the select board, Mr. Consolati, Mr. Renier, Ms. Carlino, everybody at the town hall. We just wanted to say that we're really grateful and excited to be before you tonight to talk about this project. And we just look forward to deepening our connection to this community that we love by opening a new business here. And we just wanted to thank everybody for taking the time. I know it's hard to find the time to participate in this process with us tonight. So, thank you. That's all.
Okay. Also, Mr. Chairman, joining me is Victoria Howell, who's our civil engineer, Matthew Skelly, who is our traffic engineer, and Matthew McGeorge, who is our architect for this project. Obviously, we're here to answer any questions of the board and of the public. And with that, Mr. Chairman, if you may, if you'll allow me, I'd like to just make a quick statement addressing the five points for consideration, if that's appropriate with you.
That's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First and foremost, under thirteen point four, the first standard for finding a special permit is in compliance with all provisions and requirements of the chapter and in harmony with the general intent and purpose. Our application meets all of the requirements for section one ninety-nine thirteen point four special permit. Additionally, we're in compliance with all provisions and requirements as we have received site plan review approval by the planning board. We have also met all conditions associated with that approval for the site plan review. Subsequent to that, Mr. Chairman, we were, had a special permit for the addition of the, to the building. That special permit was also granted by the planning board and issued by the town. We've also met all conditions placed on us by that process. So all conditions for both approvals have already been completed, submitted, and received by the town. Additionally, and when we talk about being in harmony with the general intent and purpose, Mr. Chairman, certainly the bylaws' general intent and purpose is to for the town of Lee to be able to cite two adult-use cannabis retailers in the town. That's the whole purpose and intent of the bylaw. And so we're certainly in keeping with that. More specifically, we're keep, we're in keeping with the zoning as the site is appropriately zoned for retail and cultivation. And lastly, town meeting considered specifically the Cork and Hearth during its discussion. And that was approved by town meeting. So we're very much in keeping with the harmony, the general intent and the purpose, and certainly the legislative intent. When we look at the next condition, it says it's essential or desirable to public convenience or welfare. So we believe it's desirable to public convenience in several ways. First, the Berkshires generally overwhelmingly supported adult-use cannabis in 2016. More specifically, Lee supported adult-use cannabis in 2016 with a strong majority vote of over fifty-five percent of voters voting in favor of it. After 2016, the Lee Town Meeting supported not only the zoning of these two cannabis retailers and product manufacturers in, in Lee, but specifically during the town meeting, the planning board presented the Cork and Hearth location as an example of a place that one of these businesses could be cited. And so when town meeting took the vote to approve the zoning, they did so with the specific consideration of the Cork and Hearth in their mind. It was not an obscure property that no one contemplated, but in fact, a specific example that they considered at the time of their vote, which leads very strongly to the legislative intent of the town meeting body. Subsequent to that voting, the town of Lee has permitted several cannabis businesses. We've seen continued support for cannabis in Lee, specifically with the opening of cannabis provisions, and by all accounts, they've done a great job. And we can, we intend to do a great job as well. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, is hopefully the board has seen, we submitted a hundred and forty-nine signature petition in support of this project and twenty-six letters of support and support this project. So we believe that demonstrates that this is desirable. All of those elements demonstrate this is desirable to the public convenience. Third would be is that the bylaw says it will be not detrimental to adjacent uses or the established or future characteristic. I think, as I just mentioned, specifically, this site was chosen by town meeting through the zoning and through specific consideration of this site during town meeting. And while this is a change in use, Mr. Chairman, the practical application of the site is not greatly different from a restaurant. People will pull in, they'll enter the building, inside the building will be making food products and selling things to people, and then people will go to their car and they'll leave. So when we think of an impact to our adjacent users, adjacent uses, excuse me, this is certainly not any more detrimental. The exterior operation, the practical application of this business is nearly identical to a restaurant from the outside looking in. We understand that what happens inside is different. So we have heard some comments about odor during some of our public hearings. Hopefully, the board has had an opportunity to review the letter that was submitted by the manufacturer of our equipment. They will be using a cold water extraction, which does not produce an odor. You will also note that during our, in our original application, we submitted an odor mitigation plan with a overlay of a floor plan as to where the odor mitigation will be installed. And additionally, we provided the manufacturing cut sheets for the equipment that will be installed in the facility. All of this is to demonstrate our commitment to our neighbors to ensure that there's absolutely no odor leaving our property. Again, in keeping with the detrimental adjacent uses and character of the building, the look of the building will be nearly identical with only the updating of exterior siding, but maintaining the same look and feel as is there today. Another significant improvement that we've made, Mr. Chairman, is the lower parking lot, the one closest to the inn. We have made that, we've eliminated the general use parking from that lot completely. It is now only, as you'll see on our site plan, it is only handicap parking and one employee parking spot. So we have greatly reduced the impact to our most closest to butter by removing any traffic coming and going from that part of the site. We'll have appropriate signage to ensure cars are going to the upper parking lot. And the parking, the lower parking lot will be appropriately striped and signed to ensure no general public is using that, which is a significant improvement. As you know, Mr. Chairman, the Cork and Hearth uses that as their takeout parking lot as well as parking for their general business. That will be a significantly less impact than it currently is. And then lastly, Mr. Chairman, our architect is here to address any questions on the design and maintaining the look and feel of business. Fourth and most, Mr. Chairman, as you talked about a lot over the last year, year and a half, is that we will not create undue traffic congestion. I just wanted to highlight a couple of key points. As you know, you've received many communications from us and from other residents and butters from other towns. Our traffic memo incorporates a customer count of approximately three hundred and fifty to three hundred and sixty customers per day. That is, that is what is provided in our traffic menu, our traffic memo that was submitted to you. We think that the reasonable and realistic perspective is how many customers we'll see. As you know, Mr. Chairman, the restaurant does significantly more customers than that per day during their peak time, and they do it in a much shorter window because they're not open all day. So we, we feel comfortable that our parking and traffic is adequate. The technical memo that we submitted to the board earlier this week was issued only to demonstrate to the board that even, I should say, our traffic memo not only include, I apologize. Our traffic memo not only included the three hundred and fifty to three hundred and sixty customers, but it also was done in accordance with DOT design standards, period. The technical memo that we subsequently submitted to the board was issued to demonstrate that even using higher capacity that exceeds the DOT design standards, meaning we used more traffic counts than the DOT would consider, the capacity for that road is still adequate for our use and was appropriate. So that technical memo, I just wanted to clear, was submitted for the purposes of demonstrating the road's ability to handle additional capacity beyond the DOT design standards. The traffic memo, and this is important, the traffic memo was based on 2018 data, and it was grown to 2027 using engineering best practices. The significance of highlighting the data, Mr. Chairman, is we used pre-pandemic traffic, and we did that during the month of June in our traffic memo, and we did that during the month of August in our technical memo. So, Mr. Chairman, this does incorporate the peak periods of traffic in Lee throughout the year. Of course, those are averaged out based on traffic and different DOT design standards. But I just wanted to highlight that, while the memo was written during a pandemic, the data was used prior to the pandemic.
Can I ask you a quick question here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
What is your anticipated volume of parking?
Mr. Chairman, we have forty-six spaces, one of which is in the lower parking lot and would be dedicated to an employee. We, that leaves us with forty-five parking spaces for customers, which is just over three times what cannabis provisions has. We say, generally speaking, that the average transaction pre-pandemic, and there's a reason why I'm saying that, and if you give me the opportunity, I'll explain it. The average cannabis transaction customer visit pre-pandemic was about fifteen minutes. So our parking lot would be able to handle a hundred and eighty customers per hour from a strictly parking perspective. Since the pandemic, Mr. Chairman, the Cannabis Control Commission has approved the use of an online ordering system, a third-party ordering system, that all of the retailers in Massachusetts universally, pretty much, I shouldn't say all, I don't know them all. Generally speaking, all of the retailers have adopted this online ordering system that's been approved by the Cannabis Control Commission. We're finding that the average customer times has gone from fifteen minutes per visit to now five to seven minutes per, per visit. So the industry has really responded to the pandemic. Obviously, as you may remember, Mr. Chairman, these stores were closed initially, along with other businesses. In response to that, the CCC approved this online ordering system. It's a third-party application. We will obviously implement the same. And so the way that works, Mr. Chairman, is you go online, you go on the app, you place your order at our store, just like you would for any other business. You come to the store, you still have to go through all the appropriate ID checking, so on and so forth. You come in, you pick up your order, it's ready for you, and then you leave. This, this software also proposes appointment times so that you don't have people all showing up at once. When you sign up and place your order, it gives you a time to arrive. So it's something that has changed in the industry as a result of COVID and something that has greatly reduced the amount of traffic time.
If you were to use that. I understand what you're saying, and I agree with it to a degree.
Okay.
As I've looked at what cannabis does and the rest of it, you know, they have, obviously have a lot less parking space than you do. But they also have two overflow parking lots that are constantly full. They look at about five hundred and twenty trips a day. And human nature says, if I'm supposed to be there at three fifteen, I'm probably going to show up at, at two fifty. And I got to go somewhere to park. And that is a bit of an issue because the only places you're going to park are at the boat ramp or at the old folks home across the street, which is not going to fly.
Yeah, I totally agree, Mr. Chairman. I would just highlight that when we say three hundred and fifty customers, that would equal seven hundred trips per day. So our traffic study, we believe, equals or exceeds what cannabis provisions is seeing. And our hourly customer counts, I mean, if you just take the three fifty and divide it by, you know, eight hours or ten hours, you know, you're somewhere thirty-five, forty customers an hour. We are, we have zero concerns on our track, traffic, our, excuse me, our parking capacity, none at all. It just, it just doesn't, the numbers just don't work it out. We're talking, our traffic, our traffic memo already includes seven hundred trips. You said cannabis provisions is doing five hundred and seventy trips. Our traffic memo has seven hundred trips with three hundred and fifty customers. We've been very conservative, meaning overly estimating the amount of traffic and impact, Mr. Chairman, and we have no concerns on our parking at all. This, this is one of the largest parking lots in the country for a cannabis retailer. It's not the largest, but it is certainly one of the largest in the country, excuse me, the state, certainly not the country. So we feel very comfortable with the parking. We do not anticipate anyone going to the boat ramp. Certainly, no one's going across the street to the assisted living facility. And we will work on our appointment system to ensure that that's not happening. And another, you know, maybe thing I could say, Mr. Chairman, we'd be happy to accept as a condition that we have a dedicated police detail for the first couple of weeks of opening, whether we need it or not, we just have somebody there. If, as long as the chief is able to support that, we would certainly be willing to accept that as a condition. And then we would also suggest, Mr. Chairman, that we work with the police department over the first several months of opening, let's say, six months. And we could even do it on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, working with the chief to determine what, if any, need there is to address that. But we feel strongly, Mr. Chairman, that not only do our counts exceed what cannabis provisions is currently doing, our parking is nearly three times the size. So we feel very comfortable.
Well, if all of this had come to fruition, I would love to have seen a turning lane going left into that building, but.
Understood. And just, you know, Mr. Chairman, as you know, that, that road is owned by DOT. If I said to you right now, we'll put in a turning lane, I couldn't say it in good earnest because DOT would still have to approve it and so on and so forth. When we looked at our traffic study, of course, Matt Skelly's here with us, the traffic engineer. It just doesn't warrant it. You just can't get there. When you use DOT design standards, even when we went to August, Mr. Chairman, which was a thirteen percent increase over the DOT design standards, and just for clarity, it's a thirty-one percent increase over your annualized traffic, we still couldn't get there. So it's, it's just math. There's a DOT design standard, and you and I both know they're not going to put in the road because we said so. And so that, that's just the challenge we have, is the numbers aren't there. But we wanted to make sure you had the right data, but, but Matt, excuse me, Matthew Skelly, because we have two Matthews. Mr. Skelly is here to address that. And just, if I could, one more comment, Mr. Chairman, because I think we're going to spend some time on traffic, but I want to make sure I close out on the five items. The public water drainage and sewage, we, is item five in your bylaws. We provided a letter to DPW in accordance with our site plan review condition that demonstrated an overall decrease in water and sewer usage. The DPW director accepted that memo, and there was no concerns raised by the DPW. And additionally, we provided to the planning board our drainage memorandum for the addition, and that was accepted by the planning board. So I just wanted to close out those five items and just place on the record that we have provided all of the appropriate documentation to the appropriate department. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to take questions. If you want our civil engineer to take you through the plan or anybody else will do that. If you'd rather get to the board questions, we're happy to do that as well. I defer to you.
Again, the, normally, the only concern about overflow or sewage is phosphate. So.
And to that point, Mr. Chairman, I think that's an important point. I want to clarify that there is no cultivation or growing or fertilizing or anything of that nature occurring at this site. It's not on our special permit application. It, it's not been proposed to you, to the town, to any of the boards in town. So when we talk about phosphates in the sewer water, what we're referring to is the water runoff from the fertilization of the growing plant. So when you're growing the plant, we provide nutrients, nutrients to the plant. Those plants are washed down, that water goes into the sewer, and that's where that concern would be. This site, unequivocally, without exception, put this to bed, there's no cultivation, no growing, no fertilizing of anything. So that element and that specific consideration would not apply to this application before the board tonight.
Okay. Patty or Sean, do you have anything to ask?
I just, I'll ask a follow-up question there from Mr. DiAgostino. If that were to become something you wanted to do in the future, cultivation, it would require you to come back in for a new license, correct?
Oh, my goodness. I mean, not only would, we would have to do the whole thing over from.
The whole thing over, yeah.
We have to do, it would require an addition, we'd have no par, I mean, it's not doable. It's not doable on the site. We would have to do an addition, we'd have to eliminate parking, which we aren't going to do. We'd have to do a new site plan. We'd have to do everything, a new special permit. And then on top of all that, we'd still need the state's approval. So that is nowhere on the radar. I don't think the site would support it. We have no plans to do it. I quite frankly, don't think it's doable to be, to be candid. But, but yes, to answer your question, it would require an entirely new process before this town and the state.
And then I have one other question to follow up on, and I may just be wrong on the, the way things happen. I know we have to give approval of the site. Have you applied yet to the state for your license, or do you have to wait until this is finalized?
No, ma'am, the application was recently submitted to the state.
Okay.
The, the state does not require the issuance of a special permit. The state does require the issuance of a host community agreement, which you remember this board approved quite some time ago. We've submitted that to the state. That process at the state level would, would take a couple of months at, at best. But certainly, the special permit overrules it, meaning if we didn't get the special permit, we couldn't open there, just, you know, just because. But those, those process, this process and the state licensing process do run concurrently.
Thank you.
John?
I don't have anything at the moment.
Okay. Chris, we're only letting open the, the public comments.
No, I do have Chief DeSantis, if you wanted to hear from.
Yeah, let's start with Chief, yep.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. I, I just want to introduce myself. I'm Craig DeSantis, for those who don't know. I'm the chief of police for our community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for, and, and the larger board for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm speaking because I actually have some concerns that this proposed location in connection with a retail cannabis operation would amount to significantly higher customer volume than what we currently experience with it as a restaurant. I'm concerned that that higher volume, the in-and-out traffic, that is, will inadvertently create congestion, but more importantly, create a public safety hazard as it relates to accidents. I'll acknowledge that there's a study in place, a traffic study, and it's very comprehensive, I looked at it. But I would also say it is somewhat convoluted, and it represents the applicant's interests. I'm concerned that despite the findings of that study, there'd be significant traffic-related public safety impacts. And, and there are some considerations that brought me to this. You know, most basically, with the addition of in-and-out traffic comes additional congestion and accident potential. Now, as we all know, this is a state highway area with a forty-five mile an hour zone coming in from the north and a forty mile an hour zone approaching from the south. I know from experience, unfortunately, drivers often exceed the posted limits there. You know, at those speeds, there's a real potential for serious bodily injury if and when an accident does occur. Now, there's no turning lane, and we run the risk of backing up traffic, waiting for northbound vehicles to pull into the, the parking area, and that's going to create a hazard. The visibility issue related to that corner comes into play. And although I appreciate significantly limiting the, the parking in that southernmost lot, there's still going to be people pulling in and out of there. And obviously, looking south, I mean, towards town, you know, there's limited visibility there too, but it, but it's both. It's the, the cars that are going to be approaching from town and coming upon stopped vehicles, but also the vehicles that are pulling out. And so additionally, I know it's very common for out-of-state customers to utilize cannabis dispensaries en masse, which means we're going to have a lot of drivers that are completely unfamiliar with the area, and those are the ones that are going to be pulling in and out of there. It's also not uncommon to have ambulances entering and exiting the nursing home, which is right across the street, and that adds an element of concern. There's no sidewalks in the area, and of course, no crosswalks. Well, why am I concerned with that? Well, I know, and I believe from, you know, some experience now that there's a high probability that customers will choose to walk up from town or during peak hours. If they think it's easier, they might park at the boat ramp and walk up, as the chairman alluded to, and they might even try parking at the nursing home and walking across Laurel Street, which would be, you know, a significant hazard. And the problem is, we couldn't control when and when, when and where, when, rather, that would take place. I mean, obviously, we would address it, and I'm sure your staff would if they had eyes on it, but, you know, we can't always control that. Cannabis retail operation is a completely different business model than a restaurant. And regardless of the stated generation numbers provided, I think there's a real probability there'll be significantly higher vehicle counts pulling in and out than what we see estimated by the applicant. I understand, you know, the parking is not so much the issue. In fact, it brings my point further home. There's forty-five spaces there. If you have a ten-minute turnover, you know, that's a, that's a substantial number of vehicles pulling in and out of there. We don't have to guess. I mean, I have a cannabis retail shop already in our town, and I've seen firsthand how busy it gets with traffic pulling in and out. As a comparison, I believe, and there's a smaller lot, as has been mentioned, but I believe they do manage that, you know, ten or twelve-minute customer turnaround during busy hours. And I think by their numbers, they're averaging one point one, one point two customers per vehicle on average. Pre-COVID, they were averaging about two, one point nine customers per vehicle. And on Fridays, they're averaging about six hundred customers a day. Saturdays, they can do six fifty to seven hundred customers. So, you know, you're talking about potentially fourteen hundred vehicles if you combine the in-and-out traffic. So, and has been alluded to that, you know, you also have the pre-ordering program. They can run down there about fifty-five orders every half hour with, with the customer averages per vehicle. You know, you're looking at about fifty vehicles per hour in and out. So that's a hundred vehicles for every hour. And I feel like with those kinds of numbers, regardless of, you know, the, the fact that we won't have overflow issues, we still have the issues of, of those entering and exiting. And it has been alluded to, I understand, the road can handle a high volume or a higher volume than what we already have. I'll acknowledge that. But it's not the overall volume on the road that I'm concerned with. It's the in-and-out and the customers, you know, turning that aren't familiar, pulling out that aren't familiar. And, you know, that's, those are the issues that I consider when forming the opinion that I just expressed. So, you know, these are all the things that I consider. I care deeply about the safety and welfare of our community, and I just want to make the board aware of my perspective. I appreciate all the work that's gone into the into the presentation, but, but again, I just wanted to make sure that I express those concerns, and, and I say thank you to the board for, for hearing my perspective on this special permit issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Hey, Craig, if, if I could ask you a question, really? Thank you, Craig. Hey, Craig, if I could ask you a question really quick. I seem to remember the, at the planning board meeting, police kind of presented some actual traveling speed numbers. Did you guys monitor that roadway?
Was that for me, sir?
No, for the chief.
Sorry, Sean, I'm not quite sure what you're asking.
I seem to remember at the planning board hearing, the police gave some some numbers for actual traveling speed, not just the posted mile per hour. Do you recall if that was the case?
You know, I don't, Sean, and I don't have that information in front of me. I just know from 25 years' experience that not just on that road, but every road, you know, drivers tend to exceed the posted limit by at least five or so miles an hour, and sometimes 10 or more.
Yeah. And what was the posted limit there again?
It's, well, it's 45 as you're heading out of Lenox into town, and it's 40 as you're heading out of town towards Lenox. And then it jumps up to 45, I believe, after you get past it.
Mr. Chairman, I think I could address the members' question around actual speeds. And just to the chief's comments, chief, first of all, I appreciate your comments. When we talk about a greater customer volume, I think when we look at the restaurant, and they're doing about 400 customers in a four hour period, even using your numbers, we wouldn't achieve that. And as you know, the accident rate at that facility from the restaurant, the owner said in 20 years, they've never had an accident from somebody pulling in or out. So we don't know that the data didn't support that, but the that that conclusion. But we also, when we looked at the speed, chief, we use the actual speeds that are clocked at the traffic count. So we didn't use 45 and 40. I'm gonna just kind of summarize some of these and maybe turn it over to Matt Skelly. But but they use the actual clock speeds that are there. I think it was 50 or maybe a little bit higher. And then when you talked about the visibility on the corner, again, to your point, we all but eliminated the parking other than handicap at the bottom where the curb is. And our site, our traffic study that Matt's going to talk about here in a second, addressed the visibility coming out of the north lot. And it far exceeds any standard by which you have to have visibility based on not the posted speed, but on the actual speeds that are observed by DOT. You'd also raise the idea about the out of state customers, and I think that cannabis provisions has seen quite a bit of that. And I'm sure, chief, you've seen that over there. But I think it's also important to note that New York just legalized cannabis. And I think that we will see a significant decrease in New York customers, which has been a large customer for the Berkshires generally. Maybe not cannabis provisions specifically, but certainly for the Berkshires. And then as it relates to a nursing home across the street, as you know, those entrances, because we'll use the north lot, are offset quite a bit. I don't know that somebody would pull in and turn around, especially given that we'll have adequate parking over there. So with all that being said, I would just ask maybe if Matt wanted to address any of the points the chief raised that I didn't cover, Mr. Chairman, if that'd be okay.
That's fine. But you also realize New York is about two years out of doing anything if it's going to be that close.
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't disagree. It's, you know, it's at least a year, year and a half. And we also, Victoria, our civil engineer, had a comment she wanted to make and then around some of this, and then maybe Matt could address the traffic. I think, I think it's, I guess, when I'm getting at it, Mr. Chairman, if we would be given the opportunity, I think it's important that we speak to the chief's concerns. And and before I turn it over, I'd remind you that we would be happy to accept a condition of approval that includes police detail to really make sure that what we said is going to happen is happening. And if there becomes an issue, we have adequate resources in place to address it. We really just don't think there's going to become one. But but having the police involved from day one is important to us. We're absolutely willing to commit to that and doing, you know, a six month, the first six months, weekly or biweekly, whatever the chief would think is appropriate, to continue to review it on that basis. So we're definitely open to making sure we address it. But I think just if civil, our civil engineer, Victoria, could jump in, and then maybe Matt, to make sure we're appropriately addressing the chief's concerns. Victoria?
Yep. So what I was going to suggest is that I think there's probably a lot of people, based on sort of the comment letters that have come in about traffic, that have comments related to traffic. And while it does seem like it's the most open to interpretation area of civil engineering, it's actually probably the most based in statistics and data and that kind of thing when it comes to warrants and criteria for different things. So I would actually propose that it may make sense to sort of hear out all of the traffic comments. That way, when Matt touches upon each one particular thing, he can include, you know what I mean, the piece that also relates to say, somebody, you know, might sound like the same recent comment, but he'll hear maybe something different. And so he can kind of summarize it all together and kind of give that at the end. So that was what I was gonna kind of jump in and suggest.
So what would your thought be on, at the bottom of the driveway, do we have a right turn only?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I could, we did discuss this with the planning board, quite frankly. And they thought that could potentially have a greater impact on our butters, because ultimately, people would turn right only and then have to find somewhere to turn around. So now, where we have adequate parking, I mean, this is what the data shows. The data shows we have adequate parking, we have adequate sightlines, and even the chief acknowledged that the road could hinder a greater capacity. So I think that issue is kind of put to bed. So now we're down to parking and sightlines. The data shows that we have it. We did show, if you looked at our technical memo, that there's the potential that some customers may have to wait to exit our parking lot, but that there was no significant wait to enter the parking lot. So what the planning board's comments on this were, Mr. Chairman, is that ultimately, they thought that our customers waiting in our parking lot was less of an impact to other locations in town, meaning people had to go right, and they got to turn around, whether it be at the inn or the ice cream shop or where, right? They got to turn around somewhere. The planning board, I think, ultimately determined that it would be better if they had to wait for a couple of seconds to make the left turn and not impact the adjacent uses. And so remember, our job is to not impact those adjacent uses. And so, given the data, the best way to prevent from impacting them is to not send cars their way. We'll just let the cars turn left. If they have to wait in our parking lot, that's not hurting anybody. And they can wait there and make the left turn when it's appropriate. So I think that that's where the planning board, that was my takeaway from what the planning board's thoughts were about the right turn only. But I will say it was discussed, I would almost say extensively. And ultimately, during site plan review, it was found to not be the best course of action for the site.
Okay.
Not an objection we have, Mr. Chairman. I just don't, I just don't think it helps that our neighbors.
Okay. Next.
Cody Gavin.
Okay.
Cody, you can unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi. Thank you, Chairman Consalati. My name's Cody Gavin with the lake house in 615 Laurel Street. I'm one fourth of the ownership team there and one of the day to day managers. Six years ago, we purchased the lake house and completed a complete renovation of the inn and exterior spaces. We went for historic designations to maintain the character of the building and ensure we kept the charm that brings people back year after year. The investment has helped us gain recognition in just five short years from TripAdvisor as one of the top 25 small hotels in the United States. A major reason for this award was through the reviews and word of mouth from our guests. We've worked hard to reach this point in our endeavor and see this proposal from Forest Wild making those strides more complicated and detrimental to our business and property. We believe this business creates a drastic change to the neighborhood.
Cody, you muted yourself. You got muted, Cody.
Thank you. So we believe this business creates a drastic change in the neighborhood, and there are a few points I'd like to specifically address. First, traffic and parking. We're concerned for the public convenience on Route 20 and the overflow that will be heading into our parking lot. Our neighborhood was made for a limited amount of turns on a busy state highway. The proposed business is completely different from what has been the Cork and Hearth Restaurant for the past 25 years. Ours will be throughout the day, seven days a week, compared to dinner service from 5 to 9, 5 to 6 nights per week. We're undoubtedly concerned about the power these marijuana establishments have and the extra trips they will create impacting the highway. According to an article in the Berkshire Eagle on February 6, 2020, by Clarence Fonto, cannabis provisions has averaged 700 customers daily with a goal of handling 1,000 customers. In addition, the business has more than 60 employees and expects to hire 30 more. These figures are not even close to what, you know, Forest Wild originally projected. Sounds like they got closer to that number, but they never really talk about how many employees they're going to have. From what we've seen, it's clear these businesses have the power to take over sections of the town. We see cannabis provision staff parking in the budding lots. Those lots may be able to handle that volume and more. But our location would be the direct brunt of that force with no extra space to spare. 700 cars a day is one car a minute for 12 hours a day for 365 days a year. If you consider that impact that will have on traffic and the character of the neighborhood. If a quarter of the employees that are at Cana are on the site at a time, that's 15 parking spots, severely limiting the site parking. According to Lee zoning bylaws, off-site parking for employees must be located less than 300 feet from the property, and that won't be possible at this location. In addition, in addition to overflow, we see cars using our lot to turn around or find a place to hang out near the lake. You know, we don't know what goes on down by cannabis provisions, because that zone is cited to the likes of McDonald's, Dunkin' Donuts, and now Starbucks, who, you know, probably benefit from that extra traffic. These locations were made for public convenience, and our lot is for the privacy of our guests. On top of that, these concerns become greater when we see Forest Wild marketing themselves as a lakeside community gathering place. Pictures of the lake on their website and a community gathering place listed in their logo makes us feel as if they don't understand the sensitivity of this issue and the prospect of a promising future. There's really no way for us or Forest Wild to police these matters, as our close proximity would only place the burden on our lot. And neither business would be able to decipher who's an in guest or a Forest Wild guest without investigating further, placing the burden on us to find out who's in our lot. The second point I'd like to address is security. It's my understanding, you know, the chief of police has to review a security plan with the applicant. This shows the concerns and precautions needed to be addressed when developing these plans. We've never once questioned security at our inn. We've never once questioned security at our inn of our guests, cars or bikes that they brought to enjoy. Even if we are assured safety here tonight, that does not resolve the issue of our guest perception lodging next to one of these establishments. If our guests have any preconceived notions about the cannabis industry and safety, then those concerns could certainly deter them from booking with us. The last point I'd like to make is in regard to retail manufacturing and marijuana establishments and odor. I've seen in the presentations that the systems they're using and filters create zero odors, making us believe, you know, that shouldn't be a concern. My concern is the day odors somehow do get out or something, or somebody smoking nearby, and a guest, you know, smells that and then reviews that the odors are present. That review is still there for thousands of potential guests to draw their own conclusion. And while we could resolve complaints within our own property, we can't control, you know, what a neighbor does. Lastly, there's been talk, kids at the beach are far enough away from the proposed marijuana establishment. For the record, we do routinely kick kids off of our property who have traveled from the beach up our back path. According to section 19911c5, indicates no marijuana retailer can be closer to 500 feet from any similar facility where minors commonly congregate. It's approximately 140 feet from the gate to the Marivelle waterfront, and the total length of the Marivelle waterfront is 134. Actual distance to the Lenox Beach where kids spend the whole summer is approximately 200 feet. That's all I have. Thank you.
Hi. Hello, hello? Hi there. I have to commend you, Cody. You hit a lot of my bullets in terms of the points that I wanted to cover. But I want to start with a question and ask these people that have put in application where they live. I live in Lenox. I live within walking distance of the wonderful restaurant that my husband and I frequented for 50 years or as long as they were there. I don't appreciate the fact that we're going to have two cannabis stores within three miles of each other. One is within a mile of where I live, and I have grandchildren. I go to the lake very often. We used to stay at the Black Swan Inn. There's a facility across the street with an aging population. New York now has their foot in the door. I don't see why we need a second cannabis operation in a residential community where families are raising children and people are coming to enjoy the beauty of Lenox and Lee. But I would like to know if any of you have ever, like now, while the construction is going on on Route 20, do any of you live nearby and know what it's like during the summer when James Taylor is appearing? Or when they're fixing the roads? Or when I'm trying to get out of my development right next to Marivelle and can't make a left turn to go to Lee? So I want to know where you live, if you know what the traffic patterns really are in the Berkshires in season and out. And we also had a family whose daughter was permanently, permanently physically and mentally damaged because of a young man having just inbibed cannabis who ran into her. So there are many concerns here, and there's not enough safeties. One is enough getting off at Exit 10 now, bottlenecking things down there. We don't need another one up the road a piece. And if you could address my question again, where do you live? Do you know the traffic patterns of our beautiful Berkshires? Thank you very much for giving me the time to speak.
Dave, you're muted. Hey, Dave, I think your mute button got hit. You have to unmute yourself.
Our next person is Steve.
Hi. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Dave is muted, and if anybody from this team wants to answer that question. Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to get a response from the cannabis, the cannabis Forest Wild people.
I don't think they have to tell us where they live. I mean,
Okay.
We can move on.
Thanks, Jeremiah. Steve?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm a Lee resident. I live on Bramble Lane, which, as you know, I think is in very close proximity to the site, the Cork and Hearth. There are about a dozen of our neighbors at Bramble Lane residents on the phone, on this call today. I think, as you know, we've been following this carefully, and we have a number of concerns. And in order to, excuse me, in the interest of time and efficiency, we sort of appointed Rich Mochi, who's on the phone. Would like to ask if he could present our thoughts. He lives down the lane from me. And rather than having all of us do it in disparate ways, we decided we would try to make it efficient. So if the board is, that's acceptable, I'd like to ask Rich if he could speak.
That'd be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Chairman and select board members Carlino and Regnier, thank you for the opportunity to address the select board on the issue of the special permit for Forest Wild. I speak on behalf of nine households on Bramble Lane on Laurel Lake. Some of the residents of those households have lived on Laurel Lake for decades, some for generations. The accumulated tenure, counting by household, The accumulated tenure, counting by household, is three hundred and thirty-three years. Our comments below are informed by many years of living on the lake and driving Route twenty past the Cork and Hearth and slowing down to turn right and left onto Bramble Lane and attempting to turn on to Route twenty. Our members have a deep involvement in the community. Two of them were founding members of the Laurel Lake Preservation Association twenty-six years ago. One of them serving as past president for twelve years. Through the LLPA, they have worked with state and local regulators and consultants and have raised well over one hundred thousand dollars since founding to support the health of the lake. Residents on Bramble Lane have been contributors to Lee and Lennox businesses, including retail shops, Highland Farm and markets. We are also supporters of the Lee Food Pantry. One of our members, Carrie Stein, frequently purchases food at Highland Farm and takes it to the Lee Food Pantry. This accumulated experience and community involvement illustrates that we are not uninvolved weekenders, but deeply involved as community members, committed to the health and well-being of our neighbors. To that end, we have always supported sensible development in the area, such as the landing and the inn, to increase the town's revenue base. But Forest Wild's proposal presents a host of problems that those developments did not. We have previously communicated with the Lee Select Board by letters dated April twentieth and May fourth, twenty twenty-one. And I asked those letters be included into the record so that I don't need to read them here. I hope that's okay. I will not reiterate all the points in those letters. I will focus on just two issues among several that we have with this challenged development site. The first issue is that the property juts into the town of Lennox. Please don't be fooled by the placement of the sign on Route twenty that announces you are entering Lennox. That is not the town line. The town line actually um, is well to the south and runs right through the project site so that one curb cut into the parking lot is completely in Lennox, as is about half the other curb cut. In addition to the curb cuts, the Lennox portion of the parcel includes almost twenty percent of the site's parking. So this site is subject to Lennox jurisdiction. In fact, Forest Wild's original submission showed the town line cutting through the property on their site map. The implications of Lennox jurisdiction are significant. We have been told directly by representatives of Lennox that they plan to assert their jurisdiction to stop this project. They will have ample basis to contest it. The Lennox zoning bylaw applies to a lot partially located in Lennox as if the whole lot were in Lennox. This parcel sits in an area that is not zoned by Lennox for a marijuana dispensary. Lennox has a similar limitation on retail dispensaries to Lee's and it has awarded its full allotment so that there is no room for another dispensary. Finally, Lennox will be entitled to a cut of the revenue. So in sum, moving forward with this site will provoke a legal challenge that will be a big waste of taxpayer money for the town of Lee and delay revenues from a second dispensary, which likely will need to be located elsewhere. We have detailed in our letter other issues that we believe will compromise the revenue from this location, but this one is first and foremost. Lennox has jurisdiction, it is opposed to this project and will likely be successful in stopping it. Our other issue touched upon by other objectors is the detrimental effect this project will have on traffic. Route twenty is a busy state road. It can directly connects traffic from the Pike to Pittsfield to the region's main hospital and many of its cultural attractions, including Tanglewood, the Clark, Massmoka and the Mount. The proposed site is on a winding stretch of Route twenty with limited visibility, no sidewalk, no turning lane, a high-speed limit, no spillover parking, a tight turn into the parking lot and limited room to maneuver within the parking lot, given the two curb cuts just feet from one another. Leaving aside a formal traffic study, just imagining anything like the traffic one sees coming in and out of Canada provisions at this site is cause for concern. Forest Wild puts forward a traffic study from Fussin O'Neill that understates the incremental traffic to be expected and does not accord with the reality on the ground that we know well, given our accumulated years of residence in this area. It understates the crash history citing only one point three crashes per year. More current data from the Mass Department of Transportation website shows that there were nineteen crashes on Route twenty from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty in Lee in the vicinity of the Cork and Hearth. Further, the study appears to be based on inaccurate traffic numbers, which when corrected for the actual numbers reported by Mass Department of Transportation and applying Fussin O'Neill's methodology, demonstrate the need for a left-hand turning lane. Fussin O'Neill note in their study that this left-hand turning lane cannot be accommodated, quote, "without undue private property and environmental impacts," close quote. Common sense and the statistics show that a left-hand turning lane is needed. The response seems to be that the road is too narrow to accommodate a turning lane. The proper response is what we contend. This narrow stretch of busy Route twenty is the wrong site for this business. The following is anecdotal, but for us illustrates the risk of relying merely on consultants and potentially inaccurate databases as opposed to the facts on the ground. One of our members counted the cars going eastbound on April twenty-ninth between four thirty and five thirty. The count was five hundred and ninety-five cars and trucks, over one hundred more than assumed by Fussin O'Neill in the study. If you do the math to calculate the traffic volume necessary to achieve the annual sales expected, you will find either that the traffic generated requires a left turning lane or that the annual sales will have to be lower than projected. Either scenario speaks to the unsuitability of this site for the second and last retail marijuana dispensary available in Lee. In sum, as specified in our letters, of the five criteria required to be satisfied for a special permit, this proposed development fails at least two. It will create undue traffic congestion and unduly impair pedestrian safety. And it will be detrimental to adjacent uses, namely the inn and the Lennox Town Beach. In addition, it will provoke a challenge from the town of Lennox that will be costly to the taxpayers of Lee and delay receipt of revenue when this project gets derailed. I thank you very much for the opportunity to address the Lee Select Board.
Thank you.
Next, we have Daniel.
Uh, yeah, hi. Um, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Daniel Osman. I am uh, in the neighboring town of Beckett. I own the Dream Away Lodge. And um, believe me, if I didn't think just putting in two cents was important, I wouldn't waste my time at another town's meeting because I've spent, spent plenty of time at my own. Um, and this one brings up a lot of issues I'd love to share, but it's your town, so I'll let you deal with that. What I want to say is that I know several people involved in this event. They are good people. First of all, all of you who, who are bashing pot cannabis, it's legal, friends. Just want to say that. I am a medical user. It helps me a lot. I'm not ashamed to say it. And this criminality thing about what pot means has to go, first of all. That's, let it go. It's done. Second, sorry, that brings up issues. You triggered me. Sorry about that. What I'm saying, here to say is that business in the Berkshires is a really hard thing. I have a restaurant on a mountaintop in a forest. You might or might not know it's on the market. The pandemic has changed our world in ways we cannot fathom yet. Now, just saying that, people are coming to the Berkshires. They're coming in droves. We need to support new business in the Berkshires. I think it's brilliant that if there are two cannabis licenses in Lee, that one is at one end of town and one is at the other end of town. Let's be clear, the Cork and Hearth has been a public tavern since nineteen oh eight. It's a public place where people drink and party. They're not even gonna be partying or drinking there. They're gonna get their stuff. They're gonna go. It'll be great, but it's not like this is a surprise or new. Anyway, enough. I'm just here to say the NIMBYism behind a lot of this is crushing me. But that's your problem. Support business in the Berkshires. Post the pandemic, we are going to have, everything is going to be different. Believe me, half the restaurants we have now are going to be gone. A third of the ones that are left are going to become new entities with new rules and new game plans. And this is the future. You can, those of you who, God bless you who've been on Bramble Lane for fifty years, but the world changes. This is what it's about. Let us bring our communities with it. Let us take advantage of the future. Let us think positively and, and get on with it. Sorry. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. That's what I want to say. Thank you.
Next, we have Chris Gerardi.
Hello, and thanks for letting me speak. Um, I'm a Lee resident and also a business owner in Lee. And like Daniel, I'm coming from the perspective that owning a business in the Berkshires is not easy. And um, that we should give these people a chance. Um, I came before this board in uh, twenty sixteen and uh, faced a lot of uh, similar opposition to what I'm hearing tonight. Um, traffic, parking and security. And um, thankfully, the board gave us a chance and uh, the concerns turned out to be um, didn't come to fruition and um, to the point that uh, a lot of the same people that opposed us actually um, tracked me down and thanked me uh, for the positive effect that we've had on the um, community. So I just think we should uh, give them a chance and that's all I've got to say. Thanks.
If I remember correctly, Chris, you had uh, the old veterans home and you had nine or ten apartments being put in?
Yes.
That's a significant difference from what we're talking about now, but I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jeff.
Oops, um, I am helping out people that are having trouble finding the raise hand buttons. So I have raised my hand for Bill Burkward.
Yeah, thank you very much. I couldn't find the icon. Um, my name's Bill Burkward. Um, I, maybe I heard this wrong, but the statement, I believe the statement was, was made where it's gonna be three hundred, three fifty, three hundred and fifty to three hundred and sixty customers a day. And I also believe this statement was made that the, um, the Cork and Hearth does four hundred customers in a four-hour period. If I heard that.
I would seriously.
What's that?
I would seriously.
Yeah, that's.
Cork and Hearth did four hundred customers in a four-hour period.
Is that what I heard or no?
I don't believe so.
It wasn't. Okay, I was just wondering. Okay, good. That's what was my question. It, I thought, I don't know if it would, I thought I heard a number and I don't know if it's inflated because that, that was what I thought I heard, the four hundred. I was just questioning that. And my other, and also I live on uh, three forty Laurel Street. And it's just amazing the amount of traffic that goes by here now. I was just wondering, do we really need another uh, retail marijuana shop? That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Next, we have David Chapman.
What do you got, Chris?
Uh, we have David Chapman and I see a Sean. Okay, David, go ahead, David.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is David Chapman. Uh, I'm a lifetime, uh, I'm born and raised in Berkshires. Um, live in Pittsfield currently, am not involved in the business, but I was involved for forty years. Most about half that in the performing arts here in the Berkshires started in high school and ended up um, forty years later renovating the Colonial Theater in Pittsfield and uh, running it for a couple of years before I decided to change careers. I'm here in support of this application. I know some of the folks here. Um, in regard to Ms. Oransky's question about whether any of these people live in Lee, I can say that one of them does live in Lee, is a resident and certainly has been familiar with the traffic patterns, as we all are who have lived in the Berkshires and endured the summer Tanglewood uh, crowds and the traffic that it does bring. But um, and that's gonna be, you know, your about there to, to discuss um, your local, your local officials. Um, but what I can say is that, you know, coming from that performing arts perspective where it is such an important part of uh, the Berkshires culture. Um, and that um, anything, any businesses that we can add to that to help bring people here to what is arguably one of the cultural tourism centers of, in the United States. Uh, and um, and to help that, help that along. Excuse me. One of the things that I've been impressed with as I've watched um, and heard some of the presentation is um, the fact that um, these people are uh, not and I'm not sure, you know, if there, if Canada provisions is supported by corporate interests, but the marijuana, marijuana industry um, has been uh, looked at as a corporate entity for a long time. I can remember when there was talk in nineteen sixties and seventies to try to legalize marijuana, that many of the tobacco companies jumped on the board to try to get patents and so forth for brands that might be referred to in the marijuana industry. Um, but this is a, a local, I would say, local homegrown industry to, to the folks who are principals live in Connecticut, but one does live in Lee. Um, and um, I, I appreciate that um, where they're coming from in terms of trying to uh, get uh, local young people especially and people who may be in crisis. This is a, generally is a minority owned and a woman-owned business. Um, and um, that um, that they are trying to support some of the social fabric of uh, what Lee uh, has to offer. Um, and uh, and so that the, these, maybe these jobs um, that are um, gonna be generated um, will be uh, jobs that support people who are in crisis. Women who have been subject to domestic violence and so forth, and that they can find a pathway, which is in a very lucrative business. Um, to find a pathway to um, get out of some of the jams that they are in. Um, so I thank you, um, you know, for the opportunity to speak. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Next, we have Sean.
Hi there. Is everything working as it should be? Good, excellent. I have two disclaimers. Uh, one, I do work in the cannabis industry for a company called Weed Maps. I'm not here uh, representing them in that capacity. But as a native son also of the Berkshires and that leads to my second disclaimer. I am the, the nephew of David Chapman. I let him go first because age before beauty. Um, so uh, I was born and raised in Richmond, Massachusetts. Uh, I worked for two summers uh, at the two beaches of Lee and Lennox, sometimes actually doing a shift after the first one by swimming across the lake. So I'm extremely familiar with the area and the property and the site. Um, I have three general data points from our experience uh, working on this and I, I'm here to speak, obviously in support of the, the site and the location. Uh, I can see that there's been a great deal of attention uh, given to the traffic event and there's no doubt that there will be traffic. And you all seem to be, have a well handle on how to manage that and, and, and work through it uh, through the town. Uh, Chief of Police, who is uh, representing, you know, grave concern and, and working that, I have no doubt that you can mitigate that. Uh, the first point is from uh, Independent Retailer Survey, uh, site named Cleaver. And I can put all these citations in the chat if that would be of some use. Um, Cleaver from two thousand fourteen to two thousand nineteen, they found that municipalities that had retail locations and had allotted against those without uh, legal recreational property home values increased uh, about twenty-two thousand dollars, in excess of twenty-two thousand dollars. So that's, that's point number one. Um, the second is from the Justice Quarterly, um, comparing studies through Washington and Colorado, obviously the two uh, states that are on the vanguard of legalizing adult-use uh, cannabis. Um, they have seen no uh, increase in corresponding crime or uptick in that uh, whatsoever. And the final is from uh, Glassdoor.com, um, which uh, shows that the cannabis industry has a number of well-paying jobs. They now, uh, we now employ in our industry over five hundred thousand persons. And those jobs pay uh, on average about ten percent more than the median salary in, in corresponding industries. So I think a lot of the impacts um, are, are ones that are really important. Now, those are all three independent studies. We've done some surveying of our own because obviously we encounter um, a lot of these discussions, but I think are important to have. But the one that I, and I'd happily release this when it's available for us, but it's a, we independently contracted. And one is that those. And one is that those, we polled survey folks, it was in Canada, but they're not that different than us. And they've had adult use cannabis legalization federally for a number of years. Now they're coming up on year three. So we polled respondents and those who could name a retail location within six miles or could not name a retail location within six miles of their own. They said, only 20% of them said they would be supportive of an additional one of a of a location in their spot. However, those who could name one, in excess of 50% said they supported. And what that told to me was very clearly is that yes, there's a lot of fear of the unknown. There's a lot of fear of what comes next. But once that comes to fruition, there the community embraces, they recognize that it's a business like any other. They're happy to see the tax revenues and they're happy to see the contributions of business society. So as a native Berkshire person, I just wanted to lend my support to this project, give you some of that data. I'm happy to drop it in the chat function if that's of some use to you. And thank you for your time, everyone on the select board.
Thank you.
Next we have Nathan.
Yeah, hi, Nathan Winstanley. I live about a mile from the site in Lennox. I'd like to start with a question to Chairman Consalati. Have you had a formal, any formal correspondence from the town of Lennox that they in fact are going to challenge this permit?
No, I have not.
Then on behalf of the people of Lennox, I apologize for the overt threat that the people on Bramble Lane made to the town of Lee. It's your decision. I just want to lend my support. I live less than a mile from the site. I think, I think you guys have got your eyes open about the traffic. But let's be honest, we've all driven by on a Sunday during a tanglewood season. And, you know, there were, there were tour buses parked out in front. And I just, I I'm, I I'm sort of baffled about the characterization of this as anything other than what it is, which is a state highway that handles a lot of traffic. And it seems to me that the, you know, that the that the applicants have got this well in hand. And, you know, look, we're on a state highway, we're in a commercially zoned property. I think it's an excellent use. It's a clean, high end retail opportunity for the town of Lee. I think it will certainly enhance the streetscape. And, you know, I urge you guys to make this happen because, you know, to Danny Osman's point, the the retail restaurant world is going to change. And you know what you're going to get here and you're going to get a high and a well invested new business. That's a tremendous opportunity to generate tax revenue. And I I wholeheartedly support the effort for this applicant. And I hope you guys will see your way forward to make it happen. And once again, to my knowledge, the people in Lennox are not intending to challenge this legally. And I think the veiled threat that was made was completely inappropriate. And on behalf of everybody else in Lennox, I apologize to the select board of Lee for that. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Nathan.
Next we have Susan.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you to the select board for allowing me to speak. I'm one of those people on Bramble Lane. I've been coming to the Berkshires for almost 40 years. I just think, I think it's, I just want to make the point that I have nothing against marijuana. There's nothing to do. I think Lee should make as much money as it can. I think there are roads that need to be fixed. I think things have to happen. Get that tax money. It's just a really bad location to put this in. Your own police chief is saying the same thing more artfully than I'm saying it, but I, it's just a bad location that I walked many times from Bramble Lane to the Cork and Hearth. And one time I tripped and I fell and I broke my ankle. And as I lie there writhing in pain, as the cars are whipping by, I'm like praying somebody didn't hit me before my friend came and picked me up. That's all. It's just a really bad location. Nothing to do with morality or ethics or anything. Put it somewhere else. That's all. That's really the bottom line point. And thank you for allowing me to say that.
Thank you.
Carrie. Carrie Stein. Just need to unmute yourself.
Ah, sorry about that. Thank you. Yeah, I just, I I I'm somewhat baffled because I've I've been listening to this and I, but excuse me, I'm a Bramble Lane resident. I've lived here my entire life. This is my only home. It's not a second home. I didn't hear anybody on Bramble Lane say anything against cannabis or anything other than a bad site for that business in that location. No, nobody is not supportive of Berkshire businesses. We all recognize what the pandemic has done. I might disagree with one of the last speakers because it's pretty impossible to get a reservation at most of the restaurants in Lennox. So I, I, yes, things will change, but things also have appropriate locations and appropriate places to be. There are eight Berkshire cannabis locations and they are all in either industrial or heavily trafficked areas. There's no cannabis location that looks anything like the Cork and Hearth. And I think, you know, the the planning board, I I was actually really disappointed because the the planning board, one of the key elements is, is it with keeping with the surrounding? And while a restaurant and an inn are absolutely keeping with the surrounding, it doesn't look like any other business. And and I would urge the select board to at least hear loud and clear that Bramble Lane is not anti marijuana, is is not anything other than probably the most able to really recognize the impact. You know, I heard two people say NIMBY. NIMBY is, you could say that, but you also could argue that the people that live the closest have the greatest knowledge of what the impacts would be. So I I would urge you, you all live here, you all go up and down. At least accept that Bramble Lane is doing this for what they think is the absolute best interest of the lake, of the surrounding area, which is one of the jewels of the Berkshires. And and absolutely not a comment on marijuana as a business or as an operation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Matt Carlino. First, I want to disclose that my real estate office is handling the purchase and sale transaction for this property. Although I'm not personally involved with this transaction, transaction, and I've never met the applicants or the current owners of the Cork and Hearth, I had to recuse for a conflict of interest during the site plan review and special permit that came in front of the planning board. I am speaking tonight as a member of the planning board, from my perspective, not the board. As I was a member of the planning board when we created the marijuana bylaw. The planning board had many discussions back and forth on the locations. The DCBC zone, which is mainly Main Street, the CBC zone, Husatonic Street, the RBZ, the RB zone, areas of 102 and where the Cork and Hearth is located. We voted not allowed in the Main Street area. We discussed at our meetings that this could be located at the Cork and Hearth property. The planning board voted to approve the zoning and send over to the select board to be placed on the warrant and voted on by the reps at our annual meeting. Our, at our annual meeting, there was a statement made, I believe by former planning board and select board member Tom Wickham, that this could go in the Cork and Hearth restaurant. The reps voted to approve what the planning board recommended. No property owners, representatives, direct abutters, or the public, from what I remember, stood up and said, we can't allow this to, excuse me, to be zoned in the RB district. And we don't want it to be located at the Cork and Hearth property. So here we are. The exact situation that was discussed at various times at public meetings and was approved by the representatives is happening. This is a business corridor, a nursing home, the Lake House Inn, the Cork and Hearth, ice cream shop, antique shop, Black Swan Inn, Mint Restaurant, the Boat Ramp, National Hotel in Miraval up the road. What if a Yankee Candle came in or a microbrewery? What would we be saying? Would we, would we, we'd be saying it's a legal business. It is what it is. Would we be so worried about traffic or saying that it could be a detriment to the surrounding area? The nursing home was built after the Cork and Hearth. If anyone has entered that nursing home heading from either direction, they would know. It can be scary. Didn't stop that project. Why? Traffic study was completed. No issues, I assume. Any other legal business would expect and want a lot of customers. What do opponents expect in this location? A non-successful business? Blight? The argument could be made that if you left the building the way it is, didn't change the name on the sign, and Forest Wild went in there and started up, no one would even know it was a retail marijuana business. The argument could also have been made that the Starbucks, the planning board recently approved on Husatonic Street, will have more of a traffic impact than this business. The Lake House Inn could benefit by guests who want to stay with them and have a short walk to the store, marijuana tourism, if you will. Excuse me. Forest Wild doesn't even meet the threshold of traffic to create a turning lane for Mast D O T. I think they would love a turning lane, but they can't even get it. Doesn't that say something about traffic? I have listened to the concerns of a butters and our neighbors from Lennox. I'm not seeing or hearing anything concrete that this will be a detriment in any way. I understand they may not want it, but that does not mean it will be a detriment. When Cana provisions came in front of the planning board for their site plan review as part of their special permit in front of the select board, they presented their traffic report just like Forest Wild did. Members were concerned about traffic and statements were made that it's going to cause a logjam. Even during our deliberations on the zoning locations when creating the bylaw, members were saying, look at Green Theory in Great Barrington, the lines. This will be a disaster if we allow it on Husatonic Street. I think it's safe to say that Cana provisions has been a success from a zoning perspective. And they haven't been, they've been a great neighbor and we are lucky to have them. We can't make our decisions on assumptions. That's a dangerous precedent. The truth is, no one knows how it will work out as to traffic. We can only go by our past experience with Cana. What I do know is Cana provisions has not had one issue that I know of. And a lot of people thought it was going to be a nightmare with regard to traffic. Based on our impact results from Cana provisions, we should apply the same standard to Forest Wild. The select board, as it did with all marijuana special permits, should again apply conditions to protect the concerns that might happen, like require the applicant to hire and pay for traffic officers as needed, if needed, and require a one year review to make sure it's operating as expected. A no vote would go against the binding vote of the reps that approved this legal business to be located at this property. In closing, I urge the select board to approve this final retail marijuana license for the following reasons. It's a legal business that will bring much needed tax revenue. We need to keep growing with diversity. This should be a high priority for our select board. It will bring new life back into an older building and rejuvenate the property as a whole. It'll bring more jobs. My last point is not one you base your decision on solely, but is a collateral damage from a no vote. You have investors that are spending a lot of money to start a legal retail business in an approved zone voted on by our reps at at our annual meeting for this use and zone. They have done everything to be a good neighbor, just like Cana. You have, and you have property owners who are at the end of their career in a tough business as is, and then COVID hits and makes it very difficult to operate in this climate. To vote no on this for what you think may happen and not what has happened with our experience from Cana provisions as our example would be a very unfair decision in my opinion. For all these reasons, together, I urge again the select board approve this special permit with conditions like you did with all previous marijuana businesses. Thank you.
Matthew, can I hold you for a second?
Sure.
Uh, look, I'm not advocating or against what we're going to vote on eventually here. But I do have a couple of comments and questions. Cannabis you brought up has two overflow parking lots, correct?
Uh, I, yes, I believe so.
Two different hotels, motels?
I believe they have overflow if they need it. Yep.
Which they use on a frequent basis according to their own.
Okay.
The Friendly's, former Friendly's, Starbucks has a turning lane.
Okay.
The nursing home, I believe, also has a turning lane.
Okay.
So when we're trying to compare apples to apples, that it's not the same. And again, I I'm not, I'm not against this. I'm not for this at the moment. I'm just want everybody to realize the situation we're in to try to do this.
Haven't they, haven't, haven't they showed the amount of parking? Is it not? Okay.
If cannabis, cannabis has 500, 500 and some odd trips a day and they're scheduled in and they set, send them to the ultimate parking lots to wait until they get called in.
Not anymore.
So where, where does the, this Forest Wild send them?
So do you know that they're going to run into a problem and they won't be able to handle the parking? Do you know that for sure now?
All I can say is going by the history that you're going by, you're right, cannabis is is a great customer, Lee. It does a great job.
That's right.
Also have two spots to put people in. The only spots that were up would be up to Forest Wild would be at the Boat Ramp or the Old Folks Home.
Well, that would be an impact to to a butters that would be inappropriate. And I would think if that were had, were to happen, that would be covered under your one year review. A complaint to the building department to enforce that not to happen. And I'm sure like Cana provisions, the applicants will do everything they can in their power to alleviate any concerns or any issues that may arise. That's just my, that's just my thought.
I I'm quite sure they will. But again, you know, you need to look at the, there's always a kernel of truth in every statement. And I'm, I'm just trying to go through this kernel of truth and see what we're going to come up with. So.
Yeah, the only thing I'm, I was saying about Cana is because everyone really thought that was going to be a nightmare. And I mean, after seeing Green Theory's lines down there, no one, everyone I ran into said, how could you do, prove that on Husatonic Street? It's going to be a huge traffic congestion and they have a small amount of parking. And I have to be honest, I thought it was going to create a trouble also. And after one day of having traffic cops down there, they didn't need them anymore. So I guess what I'm saying is we don't, we don't, we just don't know how it's going to work out. But the point is, you can put conditions on it to protect the abutters. So there is not a detrimental impact to them. And I encourage you to do that because we do not want any of these abutters impacted in a negative way. And so I think you should put as many conditions on this as you feel is necessary to avoid a negative impact to anybody in the surrounding area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Richard.
Yes, I just wanted to follow up with regard to the gentleman that suggested that we were making threats on the behalf of Lennox. So we're not in any position to do that. We did hear directly from an official in Lennox indicating concerns in the nature that we relayed. If those concerns have not been expressed to the Lee Select Board, perhaps that issue could be straightened out with a couple of phone calls to assess where they are. One can debate the issue of what the traffic will be, and that's about projections and studies. And those probably could come down on one side or the other. One cannot debate that a portion of this is in Lennox. One cannot debate that a portion of this is in Lennox. That's a fact on the ground. And I guess the questions, uh, question is, what are the implications of that? And we understand that uh, those could be a significant negative for this project.
Yep, Deb.
Hi, I have raised my hand for Bill Berry, so I'm passing the baton. Thank you.
Thanks, Deb. Um, am I being heard?
Yes, yes.
Okay. My name is Bill Berry. I'm one of the owners of the Lake House. I'm also a licensed practicing engineer with a master's degree in civil engineering. And I have previous experience with traffic studies. Earlier in my career, I was the engineer for two residential subdivisions in Lee, amongst others, and worked on siding of power plants when I first started out. Our main concern with this project is with the traffic problems it will create, which will be detrimental to adjacent uses and to the established character of the neighborhood. It will, in our opinion, create undue traffic and unduly impair pedestrian safety. I'm concerned that that study that has been provided doesn't accurately model the conditions that would exist if this is approved. Is my opinion that the number of cars that would be going to the property during peak hours would be an issue not only to our property, but potential to all properties between the town and this property and to the north of Plunkett Street. Canada provisions currently has 700 cars a day. Now projecting it to increase to a thousand cars a day, according to a recent Berkshire Eagle article. Seven hundred cars a day equates to a car a minute all day, every day, all year long. We went to Canada provision to count the traffic, to confirm what actual conditions look like. We went on a Sunday morning in February and a Saturday afternoon in April between three and three thirty. In February, Sunday morning, there were fifteen cars in fifty minutes, fifteen cars in fifteen minutes. We went back in April after having one of the planning board members indicate that no one presented any evidence that there were issues with Canada traffic. During the half hour I was there, there were fifty-six cars in thirty minutes that turned into the parking lot. Or two hundred and twenty-four trips per hour based on the traffic reports method of counting. This is four times what they're projecting. We, we recognize, and this is in April. We recognize that the traffic during the week from December to March will probably not be near a car a minute and more likely three to four cars a minute during peak summer hours. That means that the traffic to the site during peak hours, especially in the summer, would be much more than a car a minute. What we, what we saw at the Canada property bears this out. There is nowhere near this many cars coming into the Cork and Hearth now during their busiest times. And they only have any traffic at all for a few hours a day. To suggest that the future traffic into the property will be close to what it is now is at best misleading. Traffic patterns were observed during April to try to assess what the traffic on Route 20 would be like with high volumes of cars turning into the two parking lots at the Cork and Hearth. At Canada, there's a center turning lane and traffic speeds at twenty to thirty-five miles per hour. For reference, at Cork and Hearth, there is no turning lane and traffic there is going forty to fifty miles an hour. During my April observations, three times in thirty minutes, the turning lane had three cars backed up waiting to get into the lot. This made it difficult for cars exiting from the parking lot to get out as it backed up to where the exit address is located. Keep in mind, the exit from the Cork and Hearth upper parking lot is much closer to the entrance than at Canada. So this problem will be worse at Cork and Hearth. In addition, there's an added lower parking lot at Cork and Hearth, which will make the problem even worse. The lower parking lot only has two handicap spots and one supposedly spot for employees. But it also has a right of way where uh, which is next to the fence, the right of way is on our property. And so people that are coming that don't know where they're going could easily get confused and go into that parking lot. Also, we saw three times that cars from the south turned into the parking lot, even though there was a car in the lot blocking their entry, so that the rear of the car extended in the road and cars had to veer out to get around them. At twenty-five miles per hour, cars from the north were able to stop and veer around them. At forty-five miles per hour with no breakdown lanes or shoulders, cars and tractor trailers may not. We also note two times cars from the south that couldn't get in because the lot was blocked, continued to the Dunkin' Donuts parking lot and went through that lot so that they could enter Canada from the north. Another two times occurred when people coming to the south weren't sure where they were going and they stopped in the right through traffic lane to turn into Canada, stopping all traffic. In a short time, in these cases, traffic backed up quickly. At Cork and Hearth, traffic on Route 20 goes forty-five to fifty miles per hour and more. There is no center turning lane. And no room to put one in because of how close the building is to the road and not to mention how unlikely it would be for the state to consider adding one. Compounding the problem is the curve in the road at the south of property, which limits vision. One other issue that is, in my opinion, been incorrectly, incorrectly modeled by the traffic study is is that the traffic from the north comes in waves as the traffic light to the north of Barabell concentrates the traffic flow going south. They have used an average wait time based on DOT statistics for a typical site to come up with projected wait times for turning into the property rather than an onsite study. However, because of the concentration of traffic caused by the traffic light, wait times to be able to turn left or out of the parking lot due to traffic from the north can regularly be thirty seconds and more. During rush hours and summer traffic, it can be at least twice that long. If a car a minute or three or four cars a minute in peak traffic trying to turn into the parking lot has to wait thirty seconds or more during rush hours, considerable backups will occur. This condition will be made worse if available parking spots causes blockage of entry to the lot as it does at Canada. It is my contention that the increased traffic pulling into the Cork and Hearth will create backups during the summer rush hours and contribute to a dangerous condition for all butters to long sections of the highway. The road is the main corridor for tractor trailers and the issues and dangers that creates into the issue, and the issues and dangers that creates. Trucks from the south already have trouble coming from town up the hills and anyone has followed one from the turnpike north is aware of the backups they can cause. If backups cause trucks traveling to the north to stop, especially, especially if they are on a hill like at the curve in front of the nursing home, they won't be able to get up to speed quickly, making the problems worse. Trucks from the north barrel down the hill towards the property at speeds that accentuate the danger. Keep in mind that the intersection of Route 20 and Plunkett Street is already one of the most dangerous intersections in the area. And then in our time at the end, there have been several accidents at the blind entries in the nursing home. Finally, our guests regularly run, walk and bike from our property to Lee and Lennox as well as around the lake. They come here to enjoy the gem that is Laurel Lake and our landmark historic building. Additional traffic and resulting backups at the Cork and Hearth parking lot will not only create a dangerous condition, but will also create havoc with the feel and character of the area. Pulling in and out of our parking lot will become much more dangerous and be an extreme hardship for our customers and our property leaning to what we believe would result in a significant loss of business. These issues will also be a problem for the Lennox Town Beach adjoining neighborhoods and nursing home, which already has a difficult issue with access. I would like to quickly point to the study that was done. Um, if the, if the selectmen have a copy of that handy, table one uh, shows.
Sir, excuse me. We've already got all through the tables and everything else and we understand exactly what you're talking about.
Okay. I just wanted to say quickly that they're saying that northbound left turns are fifteen and really what I looked at at, at the Canada provisions, that number should be sixty-eight, which would vault us way into the area of needing to have a center turning lane based on DOT standards.
Understood.
Uh, so quickly finish up. We feel these concerns do not meet the standards required for the approval of the special permit and ask that you reject it tonight. In addition, we request that you place condition on the proposed addition that was approved for a marijuana facility that will require reapproval by the planning board for any other purpose. Thank you for considering what we have to say.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next we have Bill Lyon.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes. Oh, great. Well, hi, this is Bill Lyon on Golden Hill and I appreciate the opportunity to talk to my friends, Dave, Patty and Sean on this whole thing. Um, I've heard many uh, statements about people regarding it as a traffic problem to the ad nauseam. And I take some of the comments that Chris Gil already mentioned earlier when he was putting his property over on the east side of Lennox and there was a big fear of traffic problems. It never happened. I do believe that having kind of provisions near the turnpike is gonna take away a lot of the business for the proposed site at the Cork and Hearth. So I think that that's a negligible issue. And I think with the brilliance of your one-year review, you'll probably be able to see, yeah, if there wasn't a problem or it was a problem, this can be adjusted so and so. Um, I think it's a great opportunity. I think other businesses along the street will benefit from this whole thing. And um, that's my point. I, I support this completely and I hope that the select board does too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see no other hands at this time, Mr. Chair. Wait a minute, we do have one, Pete DiAgostino.
Mr. Chairman, if you feel it's appropriate, I thought we would just um, quickly touch on a couple of the comments from the residents if you'd like us to. Um, and then maybe Matt could address some of the traffic. I, I think um, we'll keep it short and, and not go point. Does that, does that work for you, Mr. Chairman? Okay.
Please keep it short, yes.
I, I've had, you know, we've, we've heard a lot of discussion tonight about, about traffic. Um, I heard the prior speaker's comments about the traffic at Canada provisions. And, and Mr. Chairman, I heard your comments to the planning board chair as well. And you know, you said, hey, we, we gotta try to get as close to apples as apples. I mean, you know, you're, you're trying to make an assessment here. I, I just wanna highlight a couple of things. You, you talked about the overflow parking. Remember Canada provisions has overflow parking because they need it. They have fifteen spots. They, uh, to the prior speaker's point about cars backing up onto the road, that happens because that parking lot is not very deep. I think Canada provisions done a great job in managing their parking. Uh, but we have some inherent benefits to our parking. One, it's three times the size. And two, most significantly, we have a very deep parking lot. So some of those other concerns that, that folks raised, you know, don't really apply to our site. So when we're trying to level set the conversation, um, you know, I think you have to do it both ways, right? You have to recognize that our site provides other benefits that the Canada site doesn't. They've addressed it in other ways, right? So they've addressed it with, you know, off-site parking, which is a smart idea. Um, but there's, there's things that are different and significantly so that, that make um, some of those specific concerns raised not as um, applicable to our site potentially. And then the other thing that I, I wanna mention is we seem to be talking about this a little bit in a vacuum. And what I mean by that is we're speaking about this like this is the only other cannabis in the area or the state or whatever. So right now the town has one cannabis retailer. As you know, Mr. Chairman, the town's voted to have two. Um, and of course with the state law, so people have raised, why do we have to have one? And that's why. Um, but I just wanna put a little bit of context around this because I think the, to your point, Mr. Chairman, yes, New York's gonna take a while to open. But here's, here's what the facts are in Massachusetts. There's currently four hundred and ten retail applications before the Cannabis Control Commission. Three hundred and twenty-three of those, uh, three hundred and twenty-three approved retail licenses. A hundred and thirty opened retail establishments, of which of the three hundred and twenty-three approved, thirty are in the Berkshire's. So this notion that all of a sudden the cannabis customer in, in Lee is going to double uh, seems a little bit far stretched for me. Certainly given the number of other stores opening in the Berkshire's, thirty of which have been approved already. Um, which certainly doesn't include us. We've not received approval. So you know, to say they're doing seven hundred cars a day and we're gonna do, I mean, where are the other seven hundred cars going, coming from? It's, it just, it just doesn't, the numbers just don't tie out. The fact of the matter is, we have data, we have traffic reports from engineers that are fact-based, based on DOT design standards. And you can certainly opine on how you feel about that, but but we have the, the actual data. And we did it in a way that isn't consistent with best engineering practices. And so I, I would just ask the board to consider that, you know, this isn't being done in a vacuum. We're not the only other store in the Berkshire's. This business is gonna continue to evolve. There's gonna be many stores opening. And to accept that all of a sudden another seven hundred people are gonna come to Lee because a store opens, it just seems a little bit far-fetched to me. I think our traffic, our customer counts of three hundred and fifty, three hundred and sixty is far more accurate of what we anticipate. Um, and so I hope the board will consider that. This, this is not the last one to open. So there's gotta be some understanding that, you know, these people aren't just gonna magically appear in, in Lee. Um, a couple of things I wanted to raise, there was a comment about smoking nearby. It's completely against the law for public consumption and, and that cannabis locations are held accountable by the Cannabis Control Commission. Um, there was a discussion about um, the town line. Mr. Chairman, as you know, our application before this board has been submitted based on map and lot number. The only thing that this board is considering is the property in Lee, which is your jurisdiction. We've made that abundantly clear and we've not asked you to approve anything in any other town, nor does our application reference you approving anything other town. We've applied by map and lot number, which would fall under your jurisdiction certainly. So I think we're, you know, we'll figure out what Lennox is gonna do and not do, but that's certainly um, you're certainly not approving anything in that town. And then uh, the, the other thing that I heard probably three times from, from some of the folks across the pond was, you know, this is just simply a bad location and, and, and not appropriate and that that other sites are industrial and heavily trafficked areas. And I guess my response to that, Mr. Chairman, is that the town of Lee Town Meeting chose this zoning. And when they chose this zoning, they said, should we put this at the Cork and Hearth? As the planning board chairman mentioned, it was raised at many public hearings and at town meeting. The town voted for this location. And so, yes, other places may have put it in industrial parks, but the town of Lee, Lee Town Meeting put it here. And they didn't forget that the Cork and Hearth was eligible. They actually considered that location specifically. I, I think that's really important. So.
I think you're missing the point of that conversation because I was there.
Yeah.
Uh, the point of the conversation was that if we allow it in this area, the Cork and Hearth could be one of those sites. It's not that they said it shouldn't go there or shouldn't go there. They just said if we accept this, this district, then it could possibly go there.
Mr. Chairman, I, I actually, you, your, your point is, is really, I'm, I'm trying to make the same point, which is that when town meeting voted to approve their zoning, they understood that that zoning included the Cork and Hearth. They, they understood that. And so, so when they took that vote, they considered that potentially one could go there and they were okay with it. So, so they chose not to put it somewhere else and they, they chose, they, you're right, they didn't approve the Cork and Hearth as an entity, but they certainly considered the fact that the Cork and Hearth would be a suitable location. And, and I guess that's my point. They, they considered, would that be suitable? And ultimately they voted based on this zoning, the Cork and Hearth would be included and potentially cited there. And they didn't have an objection to that. So I just, I would just ask, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn it over to Matt Skelly for a minute, just to maybe summarize all the traffic stuff. But I would just ask that as you're considering these sites, the, the Canada provisions and ours, you're right, there's differences, but those differences go both ways. There's some things better at their site with the offsite, but ours is deeper and bigger parking lot. And those things in my mind tend to balance out. So I just, maybe Matt could do a summary of some of the traffic responses.
If he does it in a short minute, yes.
Yeah, absolutely. My name for the record, Matthew Skelly, um, a registered professional civil engineer in Massachusetts and I'm a professional traffic operations engineer. Um, and I'm at Boston O'Neill. So I primarily what I wanna respond to is Chief DeSantis's um, comments. He did a great job of kinda touching on almost everything else that other people mentioned. Um, so crashes, uh, congestion, um, I'll, I'll come back to those. I wanna talk about trip generation, right? The most important thing I think that we say in our, in all of the materials we've submitted is that according to the Institute of Transportation Engineers standards, which is what we have to use here, um, the, the restaurant and the dispensary are gonna generate a very similar amount of traffic. Um, in fact, we would expect there to be only a difference during the peak hour of about sixteen total trips. So when you break that down, you're gonna have eight trips entering, eight trips exiting. From those eight trips entering, we figure it's gonna be about fifty-fifty north and south, which means that only four of those additional entering trips are gonna be making left turns into the site. And I think that's critical to touch on because the, I, you know, we, we've talked a lot about whether or not a left turn lane is warranted here. And you know, compared to the, to the restaurant, um, you know, four additional trips is not gonna get you into a place where you need a left turn lane. And, and critical to that, you know, the, the two different. And, and critical to that, you know, the, the two different, you know, the former use and the current use operating very similarly, the crash history there, we just looked it up to get the latest data. Within 1,000 feet of the, north and south of the site, there's been nine crashes in the last five years, less than two crashes a year. Six of those were with fixed objects on the side of the road, unrelated to the land use. So we're seeing a roadway that operates very safely, you know, with the existing land use that is going to be very similar to the way the dispensary operates. We touched on out-of-state customers, you know, this is something that we want to be focused on permitting this for the long term. Eventually, that is, you know, you're not going to get, this is going to be local traffic primarily. And the pedestrians, I know, you know, that is a concern, but it's not going to be, again, any different from what you would see with the restaurant. Last thing I'll mention, because I know I got to keep it brief, the standard here is undue congestion, right? And what we, when we conducted the analysis that we submitted in our second memo, we bumped the volumes up to the highest level that you'd see them in the year, August. You're, you know, you're not going to see those levels very often. We conducted our capacity analysis, which is a review of congestion, using those peak, peak, highest of the year volumes. And what we found is that the left turns into the vehicle operate at a level, into the site operate at a level of service A, less than 10 seconds of delay for cars turning into the site during the peak periods. And cars exiting the site, somebody mentioned that it sometimes could take 30 seconds or more to leave the Cork and Hearth. That is what we found in our study. So, you know, the cars leaving the site, yeah, you might have a little bit of delay there. Two, two cars max queuing up in the driveway, if it was three, there's room for it. So I think that's the critical thing. I think we've demonstrated that there's no undue congestion as caused by this site. And I don't want to go on any further here. I got more I can say if there are other questions you want me to respond to.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have two other hands up if you'd like me to recognize them.
No, I think we heard enough from both sides. I'd like to talk to Patty and Sean about what their opinions are at this moment.
Mr. Chair, and I apologize, but I just wanted to bring some quick context with regard to detail officers. Should that become necessary, we'll certainly try to mitigate any issues with regard to the traffic congestion. But from a safety perspective, you know, we can't have an officer, it's an unreasonable expectation for an officer to step out into 50 mile an hour traffic when a vehicle was moving at 70 to 75 feet per second. And it's not like a construction zone where there's signage, cones, and all of that. So it's not a reasonable expectation that we'll be able to change that environment by having a detail officer there. So that's the only additional comment I have. Well, we'll certainly try, but I don't want that expectation there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we did have someone from Cannavial Provisions, if you wanted to recognize them.
All right, this is the last one.
Thank you. And this is Eric Williams, 156 Summer Street, COO and owner of Cannavial Provisions. I just wanted to weigh in on a few things that, obviously, we were mentioned an awful lot this evening. And there's only one thing that I thought was actually worth correcting, and that's our actual number of parking spaces, which is 24. I would certainly love to get Bill Berry's study that he did at our site. Truly some insights, and I'd love to get those as well. Nothing else that, that in particular has been mentioned about our store. And I've had a lot of conversations with persons, obviously, in the community. Nothing else is inaccurate enough to warrant a correction. And so I'd say, most, most everything that I've heard tonight is, I would characterize as truth about our store. I did want to mention that, that yes, our traffic's studies and projections, I'm proud to say that we actually were able to blow by them. And through that, I don't think we would have been able to handle it without the true support and professionalism of the Lee Police Department. So I want to thank Chief DeSantis and all of his team for the support throughout it. And, you know, I'm not going to comment in any other way on the, the business operations or their own projections. This is quite the professional town. Obviously, we've been through the processes, and I support the processes. I would only just, just comment that if our site, our projections are to, were accurate tonight, as some folks had laid out. And I would just only say that if our site could handle 1,400 customers a day, yeah, we'd get there. So with, with that, I just wanted to weigh in on behalf of my community and company, since we were mentioned so much here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty or Sean, do you have anything to add?
I don't have much to add. I think, you know, the, the planning board did quite a bit of, you know, had, had a long discussion about the, the zoning and the distance to the beach and the traffic and all that. And I think that, you know, a lot of the concerns were, were spoken to here today by Matt and Pete. Other, you know, I don't really have many concerns, you know, I am worried a little bit. I appreciate the chief's concerns about the traffic. And I do see a, an increase in traffic through that area, although I'm, I don't, I'm not sure that, you know, they would do the same, like, like Pete was speaking to. I'm not sure that they would do the same amount of traffic as Cannavial would, would do, because they're, they have a better location, frankly, than, than you do. I'm, I'm wondering, you know, how, if there was to be a congestion issue, or a, an issue of your patrons parking in a adjacent parking lot, how would you guys, you know, address those issues?
May I respond, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
Mr. Chairman, maybe I could suggest, first and foremost, what we could do. I talked about the online ordering as an option that the industry's moved to since COVID. We could go one step further and do appointment only. And that would allow us to completely control the flow of traffic. I don't know that we'd want to start there, because it hinders the business quite a bit when it's starting. But maybe I could suggest this, Mr. Chairman, a condition that we do a three-month review with the board, a six-month review with the board, and a one-year review with the board. And what we do is, if we find that the parking is becoming an issue, meaning we're not able to handle it, and it's, you know, not being serviced by our law, we could immediately move to an appointment-only model. Other businesses that, such in the city of Boston, where there's no parking, they've done that, and they're able to manage it. And/or where they have only six parking spots, they're able to manage it. And, and the way that works, if I could just give you an example, you would start and say, okay, we're going to do however many parking spaces we have, right? We're going to do that many appointments every 15 minutes. And then we see how that works. Is that, is that, because to your point, Mr. Chairman, maybe people show up early, maybe they don't show up, maybe they show up late. And you adjust those times, we've done this in other communities, you adjust those times where the appointments become larger or smaller. So maybe you go to 17 minutes, maybe you go to eight minutes. You just adjust the appointment schedule in such a way that you're not exceeding your parking capacity.
How many potential employees do they assume?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
How many potential employees do they assume?
Total employees, we had projected at 35. Total employees, but not, not per shift.
How much for an 8-hour shift?
In the store, it just depends on maybe the time of season. You probably have 10 or 15 employees.
So you're going to take those parking spots away from the 47 you currently have?
Right, that would, yeah, that would be included, is that.
That would lower it down to 32.
If you, if everybody drove in their own car, and we couldn't find other ways to get employees there, yes.
Well, unless you're going to drive a bus there, you're going to be stuck with that.
Right. Well, and, and that was another thing, Mr. Chairman, is, is, you know, we can take a, we feel strongly that our parking's accurate. I gotta really say that, but.
I know, but you're, you're touting 47 that you have the ability to park. But if you're going to take away, you know, 15 plus the one in the front, so now you're down 16. So, you know, let's, let's be honest here, you're, you're actually down a lot less than what you were claiming.
Well, one in the spots would be employees. So you'd take, you know, 10, 10, you'd take nine to 14 from the back. But, Mr. Chairman, I think, just, just by, by way of a way to really address the concerns around parking, is we could do two things. We could do these incremental reviews, and I'd be happy to say, let's do one after two weeks, after one month, whatever the board thinks. If we're having an issue with parking, we're going to address it. And there's two ways we can address it. One, we can find off-site parking for our employees, which would open our parking. And two, we could do the appointment-only based approach, which fully manages your customer count by your parking. That's how the software works.
Right.
So I would just say that maybe we put in some review increments as a condition that allows us to come back and say, hey, our parking lot's doing well or not doing well. And we've implemented the following steps. I think our first one would be find off-site parking for employees. And then our second one would be to go to appointments only. It gives the town total protection and total control over our parking lot, should we exceed it. So I just offer that as a potential condition that, you know, to the point of the planning board chairman, that allows you to hold us accountable to our commitment to not overflow our parking. And there are things we can do to address it. It's, this is not like we, we have to ignore it, we'll just address it. And we're happy to accept those as conditions, and it certainly protects our butters. Okay, great. Thank you. Patty, do you have anything to add before we look at findings?
Yes. Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank Chief DeSantis for his remarks and his concerns, and I understand that. And I kind of think back, for anybody who goes to Westfield or Springfield, especially during the summer months, you always see, if not a detail officer, you see a police car with the light shining at a congested area, because you've got so many cars on the road, and it's development, it's economic. Having said that, I think that we are overreacting to what's going to happen and what's going to come into town, based upon Cannavial, and based upon what the applicants have said. And a couple of things make me feel better about that, is I'm glad to hear Pete talk about a review, less, less time than a year. We've put a one-year review on everybody else, but if they're willing to do something else, I think that's a good idea. Then anything coming up, we can stop along the way and figure it out. To be truthful, all those letters and the petition that was concerned, the majority of them were from Lee taxpayers who spoke in favor of this. And they were, they're looking at favor on the tax funding, and they're looking in favor on the, the business being locally owned. As far as the Lake House Inn, it's beautiful, you've done a great job, and I'm sorry if you've had issues, but maybe this is the time to straighten them out with the new owner. And I would much rather have something like this in a building that's going to look the same, pretty much, as it does today, and it's going to look like a pretty building going forward with this, rather than some type of manufactured, industrial-type place. And the last thing I want to say is, again, town reps voted this zoning district at a town meeting, at which it was well discussed, and it was explained that the Cork and Hearth could become an example of a place to go. And we voted it in anyways. And Lennox will have to do whatever they feel they have to do, but that's all. That's all. I think the applicant has answered our questions.
Okay. So I have the five findings to do. I'm going to read them one at a time. We'll vote on each one of the five findings as we go through them. Okay?
Okay.
Well, number one, it's in compliance with all provisions and requirements of this chapter in harmony with a general intent and purpose. The planning board went through this. They found it in harmony in the general intent based on the zoning for doing marijuana store. I also find you, yea or nay?
Sean Renier, yea.
Pat Carlino, yea.
Is central, essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare at the proposed location? We received 146 letters in support of allowing the use of cannabis at this marijuana store for adult use. I also support you.
Sean Renier, yea.
Pat Carlino, yea.
David Council, yea. Not detrimental to adjacent uses or established or future character of the neighborhood. Again, there is a essential discussion ahead, ahead we have, whether this is going to be any worse or better than having a restaurant in this area. From everything I've seen, it is about even. How about you?
Sean Renier, yea.
Pat Carlino, yea.
Will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Well, we've just been through this for, I think, almost two hours now. While there may be some increased traffic, will it be undue or not? At the moment, it appears no. But at the end of this, I would like to make some suggestions that we vote into this as well, so we can address it. How about you?
Sean Renier, aye.
Pat Carlino, aye.
David Council, aye. Will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any municipality facility to such extent that the proposed use of any existing use to the immediate area or any, any other area of town will be unduly subjected to the hazards affecting public health, safety, dental, welfare. It's been shown in our past cases with marijuana use that they use actually less consumption of water and facilities of sewer than it did before, given it was a restaurant. It will be significantly less. How about you?
Sean Renier, aye.
Pat Carlino, aye.
Council, aye. Now, I would like to add this to the end of the special permit, that we have a three-month review, a six-month view, and a one-year review to discuss traffic studies or traffic problems or not, and a question on whether the odor is offensive to the neighbors.
No odor.
I, I would, I would, if you're looking for a motion, I would make a motion for those, for those points to be added to the special permit.
I'd second that, just making sure it's, we put it in as three months from the date of opening, and then six months from the date of opening.
Right.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I don't know if we need to put it in, but upon Police Chief DeSantis's thoughts, if detailed police are needed, that he should get in touch with the owner, and the owner will arrange to hire police detail. I think we did that, Hannah.
Yeah, I think it was required in the first week, and then when they disclosed that they didn't need it, then it went away. So.
Right.
So I've got a motion I need to second.
Oh, I'm sorry, did Sean motion it?
Yes, one, one more. Can I just ask for one more thing? This is Bill Berry from the Lake House. Okay. During the planning board meeting, they talked about construction and hours of construction, and that you were able to put limitations on when construction could occur. And if anything happens there before 10 o'clock or after 4 o'clock, it's going to be very, very difficult for our business. So I would ask that you put stipulations that construction
I guess I would.
Hours of 10 and 4.
I guess I would ask the applicant if they would consider 7 to 3.
Mr. Chairman, this, this came up at a prior meeting, and we're happy to do shorter hours. I would ask that it be applied to exterior construction.
Uh, I would ask that it be applied to exterior construction only because obviously if we're in the inside, that shouldn't be an issue. Um, I think ten's a little bit late for construction people to start. Maybe we could meet in the middle at eight or eight thirty or something, something like that. But uh, i- if it's related to exterior construction for the addition, we would be agreeable to that. I don't think the interior remodeling is going to affect anybody. Uh, so I'd like to limit the scope to just the exterior work, which is just the addition that was approved as part of the other special permit.
Okay.
Eight, eight thirty, most of our people are still in bed. Um, that is going to be a really huge problem for us. Um, they come here to relax, get away, they're going to go elsewhere.
Um, uh, could I ask P, I'm sorry, Mr. But could I ask P what your construction time is, what you think the construction time of the exterior?
Um, I don't have the construction schedule in front of me, uh, for the, for the small addition, you mean?
For any exterior work?
Yeah. So for the exterior work, um, you know, it, it's really just a matter of a couple of weeks. It's, it's only three hundred square feet. Um, so this is, this is not a, a large addition on some siding. I, i- and we want to be really good to our neighbors. Maybe we could agree to nine. It's only a six-hour workday. Um, I think it's tough to get stuff done much quicker than that. Maybe we could just go to nine, uh, to be a little bit later in the morning.
Go to nine to four?
I, if, if Bill can live with that, we, we can live with that. We want to make sure we're being considerate of them and their customers.
Uh, so what for you?
Um, well, if that's what we're offering, I guess we're here taking what you're offering.
Mr. Chair.
It's not the best for us, that's for sure.
Mr. Chair Matt Carlino, uh, Chair of the Planning Board.
Yep.
Uh, I, this is one of those situations where, um, I do think we have to protect the butter, uh, for his business and, um, as much as I'm for this special permit, I do think, um, uh, later, I know it'll cause inconvenience to the applicant, but I, I think we do have to protect the lake house inn for their, um, for their rentals, you know, uh, for their guests. So later the better, I think, and just this case, I think is a good thing.
If, if I, if I could make a suggestion, you know, I think that, um, in the construction industry, you can uh, you know, kind of work around this a little bit, maybe work inside until ten and then do some work outside after that. I think that you guys can kind of find a way to, uh, to be neighborly in that respect.
Uh, that, that's our goal is to make sure we're taking care of Bill and, and his business. Um, would it i- i- if, if Bill's more comfortable at ten, Mr. Chairman, could we go ten to five, just so we have at least seven hours in the day? Would that, would that be reasonable?
I think if, according to what he's saying, that he's worried about them waking up in the morning and I suppose five o'clock would work, but Bill, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm still here. Four o'clock, we have, uh, our guests there for a complimentary wine hour on the cliff. So I mean, it's a very difficult time as well. Certainly ten o'clock in the morning is, we better be.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have to give a little bit here somewhere.
Yeah, if we're gonna have to give, it would be better to give on the backside rather than the ten o'clock in the morning one. So it'd be better if they started later and ended.
How about nine thirty to four thirty then?
Uh, that works better probably. That's probably a good time though.
Work with that.
We're, we're good with that, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Hopefully this is put to bed.
Correct.
Pardon me?
For exterior work.
Yes, correct. So as far as I can tell, at the moment, we have a review at the three months, six months and one year. Um, they will deal on the parking or the traffic problem or not or lack of traffic problem. We have a three-month, six-year wonder review if there's an odor problem or lack thereof. And we also have an agreement that the exterior work will be done from nine thirty to four thirty on Monday through Friday. Is everyone in agreement with that?
Yes, I would just like to add in to make sure that, uh, uh, the chief's details are, are included into these conditions.
As well as the chief's detail if necessary, correct. So, uh, this is a new motion, so can I get a motion, please?
I will make a motion, uh, to, uh, to add those conditions as stated by Chairman Consolati.
Can I get second?
Pat Carlino, aye.
So we have the five findings plus the additional material. Can I get a vote, please? I need your name and a yea or nay.
Pat Carlino, aye.
Sean Renier, aye.
David Consolati, aye. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, uh, just want to make one more comment too, which is, uh, given all the discussion around the host community agreements that we have the same condition that we had with Canada provisions that the host community agreement is complied with.
Absolutely. So I can, do you need a motion on that, Jeremiah?
Or just? Uh, the motion, just to be perfectly clear that, that it's going to be a condition of the special permit. We did this same thing with Canada provisions. I don't think it should be any different for this applicant.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that they have to adhere by the, uh, host community agreement.
Second it.
All's in favor?
Pat Carlino, aye.
John Renier, aye.
David Consolati, aye. All right, let's put this one to bed. We only have seven more things to go through. Uh, our next order of general business is Harsh Patel Green Theory cultivation discussion regarding expansion from eight forty-five Plaza Street.
All right. Hey, everyone, uh, Board of Lee, this is Harsh Patel from GCC Parma. Um, today I wanted to explore a feasibility of our expansion of Lee. At this time, I would like to request to be moved to a later date in general business as we're still waiting for a lot of the information to trickle in from our design team and our civil team. Um, and yeah, thank you.
Seeing as you've actually never not given anything to us or outside of this?
No.
Briefly had?
So, so this is, uh, just, you know, uh, a general meeting used, you know, that I was going to use to explore the possibility of expanding. And, um, I, you know, we, we did a feasibility study with our civil engineer and, um, you know, he is still reviewing some of the data because there is um, the site is, was tricky to begin with and, you know, and, um, my plan was a little bit ambitious. So he has a lot to work with and making sure that, um, you know, it, it fits, um, within, um, you know, all the requirements. And yeah, so we still need a little bit more information.
Well, as I, as I was trying to say is that seeing as you have given us nothing, then to give you an extension to a different time is perfectly fine because we really have nothing to go by anyway. So all we are having is a discussion and that's fine.
All right.
And you could file with our secretary at a, in a different date.
Thank you, sir.
You got it. Anyone want to, want to add anything to that?
No.
All right. Next we have election workers appointment. If I can find it.
Want me to read it?
Uh, no, I got it.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, we need the appointment of following election workers, Laura Page, Jim Ethier, Marcia Slominski and Liv Deonra. Uh, that's by, asked by the, uh, town clerk to, uh, add them to the election.
I'd move the four election workers as read.
Second.
All's in favor?
John Renier, aye.
Pat Carlino, aye.
David Consolati, aye. Uh, next, we have a temporary sign permit, uh, for a na- name change from site Jay New to Cafe Chris Kelly. Uh, the sign is the same size as a existing one. So it's really at the moment a temporary sign permit for the moment and they also need to, uh, do a liquor license change on, on the names. It doesn't seem to be anything of a, a problem except for changing the names to be more of a cafe than a, than a restaurant.
Yeah, and Cindy sent them a nice note telling them what they had to do. So I'd move the temporary sign permit for Shay New.
Second.
All's in favor?
Pat Carlino, aye.
John Renier, aye.
David Consolati, aye. Uh, next, the cable advisory committee is in need of members. Anyone wishing to, uh, join the cable advisory committee can certainly call our office or look online and, uh, uh, be involved. It's, uh, something that seems like nothing, but it actually helps keep the rates down and the rental fees for the box. There's two vacancies currently and anyone interested could send a, a notice to our office. Either, either you have anything to add to that?
No.
Okay. All right. Next is the Lee commute, Lee Youth Commission update. Something we all look forward to every two weeks, right, Kath?
That's right. We like, there we go. Okay.
How you doing?
Oh, no, we're good. We're moving right along here. So, um, I just wanted to, um, look at the draft of the business plan and, and connection with the demographic profile. And in the business plan, which was put together for us by, um, give me a second now because my brain's tired from two hours. From Randy Kinnis, who has done this kind of stuff for the YMCA's, um, so putting that together with this profile, his questions, uh, dealt with, um, is there a population to support the project? Um, and I looked at the profile as of two thousand nineteen, we had five thousand seven hundred forty-two residents. And we would also include other towns, not just Lee, but Lennox, Becca, Otis, Tiername, Stockbridge, et cetera. The second question was, is the area growing or declining based of demographics? And we're flatlined, um, and that information came from Berkshire Regional Planning when they were doing a study for the Berkshire Educational Tech, Berkshire Regional Tech, oh, I don't know how to say it. They're gonna be the regional task force, um, of looking at populations for the schools and, and what they were doing with their project. So at this point, Lee is still flatlined. We're not, um, decreasing by a substantial number of people. Is the population aging or is there population of young people growing? Um, yes, there is definitely an aging population, but we're young at heart and, um,
You didn't say they're flatlining, so.
Oh, well, flatline, I mean, yeah, we're still breathing. We're, we're still, the blood is still pumping. Um, and there is a, a young, uh, population as well, growing. Um, the other one, what is the average household income? I only found the median income at two thousand nineteen was seventy-four thousand nine dollars. But within that demographic profile, if you've read it, there's something that there's more and more people within the town that are reaching over a hundred thousand dollars a year. What's, what's the average income of the Lee area? Um, I don't know what the average income is, so, and, um, is the project completion or competition or adding value? And I wrote down from what I read that we're adding value to our community. Also, in, uh, his first page, wanted to know, do we have partnerships? Well, hopefully we have the town of Lee helping us, the L Y A and the schools and businesses. Um, I've also talked with, um, Colleen Henry from the Chamber of Commerce, and she's certainly willing to look into partnership with us. I do have several other, uh, people that I need to, um, talk with. And my next report will include them if I've had a chance to get to them. Uh, we certainly will, we, as I said, reach beyond Lee, Lennox, Becca, Otis, Tiername, Stockbridge. Um, as for funding, we do have a plan for funding. I think I said the last meeting, we did have a, um, uh, workshop, um, helping us to talk about how would we fund it, what kind of monies do we need from different donors, that type of thing. So, um, with that, we know that we need to ask the town for some money, grants certainly and donations. Our case for support, a regional multicultural community center for all would have an immediate positive impact on the quality of life and wellness go, goals for us and surrounding towns. And donor identification, that's in process right now with our subcommittee. Plan for sustainability, certain fees, annual fundraiser, uh, the need of a facilities director or an activities director. We're still, um, working on a task force for funding and we're in the process of a marketing strategy. We also, um, have Brian Hallett from the Pike Company. With his team is working for us for a more updated, you know, budget for two thousand twenty-one. And they are doing that, um, gratis for us. So that's all I need to say. So if you have questions, go ahead, ask me and if I can answer, I'll answer otherwise. I'll check it out for next time.
All right. Thanks, Kathy. John or Patty, you got anything for her?
Um, I, I don't think so right now, no.
And I do, um, hear you about the, you know, prices and delays and getting materials and all that stuff. And um, again, Brian Hallett is, um, working on that as well for us to, um, make sure that there's no, um, price gouging or any of that kind of stuff.
Nope. I got a notice, uh, this morning. Uh, asphalt jingle prices went up thirty-three percent. Window prices went up fourteen percent, siding went up nine percent. So it's just a, uh, an expensive time to live.
Right, right. And you know, my own personal perspective, no time is going to be a good time for asking for money. You know, and that's, that's the way it goes. But, um, still very hopeful. I mean, we might have to scale this project down way, way down. Um, we don't know yet. We're still waiting uh, for things. We do have, and I don't know if I sent it to you, but I will for next time. Um, the site plan for, um, Stockbridge Road for the infrastructure, um, for the different pipes and money.
I got the building, but not the, the infrastructure, no.
Okay, so that, because we just got that from S K Design. Um, and that, then the price of, of what thing at that point in time, um, would be uh, type of thing. So we, we do have that piece. So right now we just have lots of pieces of the puzzle. Um, we need to put it together at some point, um, you know, we might, you know, I don't know if we might, we probably will ask the select board to consider, um, a building commission. I don't know how that goes. I don't know what the procedure was for building the school or anything of that nature. Um, but we need to have some experts on our commission because right now we're just our ordinary folks trying to get this off the ground after what was it, thirty-eight years of different surveys that one or two at the top was a community center. So our thing was just to try to get it off the ground, but we do need some experts helping us.
Um, Kathy, I have a question to me as a follow-up here. Um, you mentioned earlier when you were talking about, uh, people helping you in partnerships, you mentioned the L Y A.
Yes.
And I've heard you mention them before. Um, so I'm wondering in what capacity you're looking to work with as partners or?
Yeah, at this point, we still have to meet. They have just told us that yes, um, they will work with us. At first, they didn't know, um, they didn't know, because they had a proposal from someone, if they could find land, this group would give them the funds to do that. All right. That didn't come to fruition. So now, the L Y A wants to work with us. They want some space in this community center because their contract, I don't know when the contract is up, but their contract is coming up in a couple of years. So they need to find a place for their nursery preschool type of thing. And other community centers have, have done that. You know, have had that as part of their center.
Okay, so you were working with.
Yes, we're working and we just have to find out details. And I just sent them an invitation to come to our meeting on Monday, or to invite them, us, to their next meeting.
Okay.
So we'll work that out somehow.
Oh, and I would suggest, I'm not sure that they do this now, because they're not municipal department of the town anymore. But if meeting, if they have it on Zoom, it would be nice for us or whoever else in the public would like to go on and just see what they're thinking, what questions they have, that's.
Right, right. And we would ask if they came to our meeting, that's certainly on Zoom.
Yeah.
Their meetings usually are face-to-face, but we could ask for a Zoom meeting.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah.
Because, because the public needs to be involved, too, as to what's going.
Yes, and they need to know, because it's more than just drawing out a survey and getting the results of the survey. Now we're talking big money, big project, you know, what's realistic? And, and this board had asked me early on to be realistic, because your, your first reaction, and I think it was Dave that said, you're looking at $30 million. And like, well, we've got it down to about 12 to 18 million. We're, we're getting there.
That's a start, Kathy. Maybe another 5 to 10 million off the top.
And hopefully, we have more than a, a little tiny building that just lets you come in and say hello. But we're still hopeful. It, it's just a very long process and, you know, a lot of money. And that's the reality, is it's a lot of money, mucho dinero, you know?
I think we knew that.
Yeah. And I think you're smart. You know, it's smart to find some collaborators who you can work with. And also, I'm curious about this building commission you mentioned.
Yes.
You know, get some experts in there. It's certainly not in a very affordable time, this moment in time, but.
Right. We still have a few dollars left in our feasibility study to get started if, you know, somebody gives us the direction of, here's a group that's willing. And if, you know, we have enough X, you know, dollars to make it work. Okay, thank. So we're still in there.
All right, Kath, thank you.
Thank you. Take care. Thanks.
Have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Okay, bye. We have no pending business from the town administrator's side. The F Y 21 revenue and expense reports for a period ending in April 30th, 2021 are on our desks. And if nobody has anything to add to that, then we're up to public comments.
Okay. And then, if I could speak one last time. Several people on the, the youth commission have asked about the possibility of a baby town meeting. Now, I know our town meeting is gonna be June 24th. Hopefully, good weather, otherwise it goes the next day or two days later. I can't remember what you said last time. But would it be possible, or is it way too late to have like a baby town meeting?
It's gonna be difficult, Kath. I mean, there's so many pandemic people that are still upset that it's very hard to get anywhere to go.
Yeah. Would it be something that could be a Zoom thing, or there'd be too many people to do Zoom?
I don't know how you do Zoom.
I don't know.
I know, we could check with Chris Britton about it, though.
We had quite a few people on tonight.
Yeah. You had 69 people. Yeah. So, I mean, it's just.
Two and a half hours, but.
I know. But it's food for thought. And usually, baby town meeting lasts two and a half hours. But it kind of gives you, you know, precursor for your town meeting, so the town meeting doesn't go till 11 o'clock at night, type of thing. But I don't know what the process is. So just food for thought, because some people on the commission asked me to ask about the possibility of a baby town meeting.
Okay.
All right. So, all right. That's it for tonight, okay? Thank you so much. Take care.
Do we have anybody else for public comment, Chris?
Nothing for public comments. I'll just mention to Patty's comment, we do have the capacity on our account for over 100 people. But, you know, totally up to you guys about the baby town meeting. Zoom is a possibility that I can look into and use some more information. But we, we can, we can host a number of people on the account. So more than we can tonight. The only other thing we had is the school committee.
Yeah, we have an opening in the school committee, if anybody wants to apply.
I think we have two, don't we, David?
Two openings?
No, I shouldn't say. I, I, I think we're looking at two openings. Am I wrong, Chris?
Yeah, so there's, there's one opening from a resignation effective May 1st that the school committee would like to post. But we have our town election in two weeks. There's a vacancy. There's, there's only one person running for two spots. So my suggestion would be to wait on the posting until after the election, see if someone gets a write-in vote. And then you know whether we could be posting it for two, or whether we could post it for one position. The school committee just sent the posting, you know, wanted to make sure you were okay with that plan and okay with the posting. And then after the election, we can use that for either the one vacancy or two, if there's no write-in candidate that's successful.
That sounds reasonable, right?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yep.
Okay.
That's fine.
Yes. I mean, that's interested on being appointed to the school committee or go on the other route, trying to get elected? Here's your chance.
There you go. So if there's nothing else, voting is May 17th at the Crossways Village. Same as usual. I don't know about early voting or not voting in person. Christopher, can you address that?
Yeah, so we, we do have a vote-by-mail that's available to anyone taking COVID precautions. So we do need a request with a signature, but it can be emailed. So I have request forms in the entrance to town hall. They can be filled out right on the spot, put in the Dropbox, or the, they're also available on our website, or they can call me. I can email it or mail a copy over. Once we get that application, we'll send the ballot out. And it has to be back at the town hall by 8:00 P. M. on Election Day to be counted. But there is no other restrictions on the vote-by-mail. Anybody who's taking a COVID precaution can get that, just like with the presidential election.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you. So if there's nothing else, our next regular meeting is May 18th, 2021. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
All's in favor?
Pat Carlini, aye.
Sean Renier, aye.
David Consalati, aye. Have a good night.
Thank you. You too.